Is trustee Taylor joining us for the Envision 2030 portion?
Yes, he is.
Great. I think that's Billy Giblin. And Stephanie Herring. Is that you Commissioners Giblin and Herring?
Sure is. Hey Cynthia.
Yeah, Billy's here.
Awesome. Welcome. Welcome back Stephanie. So it looks like we're just waiting on Steve and potentially Roger Cornell. And we have everybody else except for trustee Taylor who's going to join us for Envision 2030.
Cynthia Rogers on the phone with me and Chris Gray.
Okay, great.
How do I, you know, I'm trying to use, you know, it says to call this number and do the access code, but it won't let me enter again. Last time you called me and you got me on.
It worked. Hey, you're on. That's what matters.
Sorry, you're having challenges Roger. It's nice to hear you.
It looks like Steve is trying to join the wrong meeting link, so give me a minute and I'll get him in.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just, I'm here. Thanks.
Has anyone heard from Steve?
He picked, he grabbed the wrong link by accident.
Okay, I just called him. I just talked to him and he said it doesn't look like Miranda started the meeting yet.
He, he's clicking on the June link, not the May link.
I'm out of it, but yes, he's there trying to get on. We're waiting for you.
We'll get there. It's nice to see a full board turn up. Hi Chris, hi Bert.
Hello.
Hi there. We have our videos off. It streams a little bit easier for us up in the mountains here. Welcome to the meetings. We'll be getting started here soon. There's Steve. Excellent.
Sorry about that. I clicked on the wrong meeting.
No worries. It's nice to see that you're here. We have everybody else. And I am ready to go myself. This is Cynthia if Miranda is ready to go.
Yep, I'm ready to go.
Get started. So whenever you're ready Steve.
Okay, let's, let's call the meeting to order. And Cynthia, could you do the roll call please?
Sure enough. Planning Commission meeting is called to order on April 28th, 2021 at 7:05 PM. And going down the list. Chair Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Here.
Commissioner Cornell.
Here.
Commissioner Giblin.
Here.
Commissioner Glasser.
Here.
Commissioner Herring.
Here.
Commissioner Paray.
Yeah.
And Vice Chair Reese.
Present.
As noted trustee Taylor will be joining us for the Envision 2030 item after the action items are completed.
Okay, excellent. Thank you Cynthia.
Sure.
Okay, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. We've got two, two sets of minutes. One from February and one from March. We'll, we'll start with the February meeting. Does anyone have any comments or discussion on those minutes?
No, they look like they added.
I'm sorry.
They look like they, they look like they added that, it looks as if the part that we asked to be added was added and it seems accurate.
Yeah, that was, that was my view. Does anyone else have any comment? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll make that motion Billy.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I heard a second.
Who is that second from? Was that Chris Paray?
Chris Paray.
Awesome, thank you. And we'll just go down and do a roll call vote going down from the top. Chair Williams?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
So.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring, were you going to abstain after being absent?
Yes, I was going to abstain. I was not there. Thanks.
Sure. Commissioner Paray? Vice Chair Reese?
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now the draft minutes for the March 24th meeting. Does anyone have any comments or corrections or discussion on those minutes?
It's Billy, I have one small thing. It looked like on page two, I think of, where is it? Page two, third paragraph, it's about two-thirds away in that paragraph. It says the ZA, I assume that should be BZA.
No, that's the zoning administrator, I believe.
You are correct Chair Williams. I was reading.
Yeah. Reason Billy, is I flagged that one as well until I realized what it was.
Keeping you on your toes.
Now I know, it's a good one.
It was a test, wasn't it?
It was.
I either passed or failed.
Okay, any other comments or corrections, questions? Okay, if not, could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
That sounds like Karen Blakemore?
Yes.
Gotcha. Commissioner Blakemore?
And a second?
All second. This is Linda.
Gotcha. And we're going to go down backwards, so we'll start with the, the latter part of the alphabet. Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Paray?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Oh, Stan, I was, I believe I wasn't there for this conversation.
Okay, Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
And Chair Williams?
Uh, yes.
Just a quick question. Stephanie, I think you were at the February meeting, correct?
Yes.
Not, not last month, but I believe you were at the February meeting.
Yes, I was at February.
Okay, did you want to vote in, to approve those February minutes?
I see, we're doing both. I think it's some other side meeting that happened when I was out of town.
Yeah, sorry about that. I, I was thinking last month because we don't normally go back two months, but if you wanted to vote on the February ones, I would take your votes.
Uh, sure, yes.
Awesome, thank you. Sorry about that confusion.
Okay. So thank you Cynthia for putting those minutes together, very complete. And informative. And so we'll move on now to public comment for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Does anyone in the public have anything to speak? If you do, you have three minutes and please state your name and address for the record. Okay, having heard no, no one ready to speak, I will close the public comment and we'll move on to our action items on the agenda. So the first, the first action item is a special consideration of a public hearing and special review use application related to outdoor patio for the Nodded Root Brewing Company located at 250 North Caribou Street, submitted by Chris Marcio, the representative for Neverland Real Estate Holdings. And before we proceed, does, are there any planning commission members that either have a conflict of interest or feel they cannot be fair or impartial? Please state that now, please, for the record. Okay, having heard, having heard nothing on that. Miranda, would you go ahead and please introduce for the town staff this application?
Yes, so the application you have before you is for an outdoor patio at Nodded Root Brewing Company, which is located at 250 North Caribou Street. And tonight we do have Chris Marcio here, who is the representative for Neverland Real Estate Holdings. The applicant purchased the property in 2017 and has been operating since July 4th of that year out of this property. What he's looking to do is, as I stated, outdoor patio, which is allowed under the commercial use group for outdoor sales, eating and drinking or other outdoor commercial activities or establishments under an SRU. The applicant currently has a wholesale manufacturing and retail sales room license with the Colorado Liquor Licensing Authority. And when they went for that, they did include the patio area in their footprint. Now, given the type of license that they have, it's not considered, you know, technically a liquor license, so they're just have a business license through town. So their license with liquor and including that patio boundary is sufficient. However, in order to operate in Neverland, because they did not have an SRU to have alcohol on their patio, they, they had to, they have to have a formal SRU, but under COVID, we were issuing temporary modification of premise in order to promote social distancing and outdoor dining when the restrictions closed up their occupancy indoors. Nodded Root did apply for that. They were issued it on June 10th, 2020, and they've actually had it for just shy of a year. So the great thing about that is it's actually given them the ability to have the informal outdoor seating areas where patrons can consume beer. And as you see by all their letters of support, they've been very successful in doing this and in really kind of having that test run, which I think a lot of is the reason why they're coming forward for the permanent SRU agreement here. So a few things for you to consider. It is a neighborhood commercial. The property is surrounded by neighborhood, however, it allows mixed use, so it's appropriate within their setting. What the applicant wants to do, and I'll have Chris speak to this more, but is to build a 25 by 24 foot patio to the north of their building. It's going to be enclosed with a natural wooden fence, which helps to keep with the character of the neighborhood. The plan is to have gravel flooring to reduce dust and then some string overhead lighting. They will turn off that overhead lighting when the patio closes, which depending on the day, is somewhere between seven to eight o'clock. There will also be a gate that patrons can enter and exit through. And then from a liquor standpoint, it'll be appropriately signed that there's to be no beer beyond that point. There is a change to occupancy for them. The patio does extend 42 seats. So there was, so we looked into parking with them. Currently, the applicant stated that they have 31 to 32 onsite parking spaces and then access to 24 to 26 offsite. With the additional 42 seats, they actually only need 30 parking spaces per code and they're able to fit that onsite. When looking at this application with the fire department and the police department, we did identify that sometimes parking could become a concern. So the applicants have actually done a really great job of trying to address that, recognizing that when they park the cars correctly, it's not an issue. So not only have they put out cones to help guide people where to park, they've hired a parking attendant who can help to direct people. They've also are in discussions with the Presbyterian Church to use their lots on the weekends and the community center when there's large events. And so they've really done a great job of trying to address parking concerns and just making sure that they're maximizing the space on their lots. If approved, they'd like to construct the patio kind of end of May, beginning of June. They talk about the comprehensive plan in their narrative, until I'll let Chris touch on that a little more. There really weren't any concerns about public work. This is already served by utilities. Rick Hendrickson, fire marshal, aside from talking through the parking with us, had just noted that if there was, you know, it was raining or there was some sort of emergency situation, people couldn't enter the building because that creates an occupancy issue. And, and Chris had discussed that people would be asked to take shelter in their car if there was a rainstorm. The only thing that we are just mindful of is that beer obviously would not be allowed to leave the fenced area, so they have to leave it there. Kind of concluded this aim, just to really again highlight that the applicant has worked extensively with staff. He had a meeting with myself, the marshal, both Marshal Johns and Rick Hendrickson. He and I continue to talk regularly to address any sort of concerns. And so I do appreciate their commitment and willingness to work with town staff and feel very confident that as we move forward, they would be open to addressing any concerns that might come up. So that's, that's me. I don't know if the planning commissioners have questions for me before Chris steps in?
Why don't we, why don't we let Chris wrap it up and then we can ask questions to both?
Okay, I, hello, can everyone hear me? This is Chris Marcio.
Yes, Chris, we can hear you. We can see you too.
I turned on my video. Is that okay or should I turn it off?
I think you're okay.
All right, um, well, I can only see a document, so I'm, I hope you guys are all doing well. I think Miranda did about as perfect as a job of summing up our sentiments as we could do. We've worked very closely with her, Rick Hendrickson, and closely, but a little less closely with Larry Johns and the police department in discussing this proposition, the idea of doing this permanently. And, you know, obviously from a business standpoint, we would love to be able to house more people. The consideration for that, our end is how can we do that safely? Because we are still in COVID times, how can we do that in a distance manner, which is fairly easy? Six feet among tables, you're outside, fresh air. And yeah, I mean, it's just, I think it speaks to the Neverland community for us to be working with, on staff so closely on these measures and supporting entity focused and tourism focused business. We really do care about this town. We care about our neighbors. And we care about our business and the livelihoods of ourselves, our families and our staff. And we want everybody to be copacetic and work together. We feel this is a great opportunity to expand locally, be able to serve some more of the people who thankfully come visit us very frequently. You know, we are blessed with the notion of being very successful as a brewery and a local company. However, that does not negate quote unquote "good problems." How do we handle parking? How do we organize people appropriately? And have a good general flow of taproom operations? And I really feel that myself and my business partner, Chris Klein, who is also on the call. So if you have any specific operations questions, he can also be a good resource if I can't answer them. But ultimately, we're doing everything we can to try and be, you know, responsible and manage this business to the best of our ability. And I, I really do feel that we've succeeded in that. And, you know, we would love to be able to take that, you know, within reason, a little further with an outside patio to be able to offer our guests fresh air and a beautiful view of the Caribou Ridge. And, uh, yeah, um, one, real quick. Miranda mentioned that we opened July 4th of 2017. I think that was a, just a misspoke, misspoken timeline. We purchased the building in 2017, opened for operation July 4th, 2019. And she also said 25 by 26 foot on the patio. We are, I can't remember exactly, but I think I have in my notes 25 by 42 foot. It's either between 38 or 42 feet, which is the length that we're licensed by the state under our wholesale manufacturers license, as well as just the natural width of our building and property on that north side of the, the business. So the patio has a natural egress and entrance in our taproom that would serve into the same footprint that we've had our temporary, we'll call it a COVID patio. And then the idea is just to make it nicer and the, make the necessary investments to improve drainage, which will also help with our new housing project that's coming in next door. I have been communicating with Dennis Bouillon, who's the owner and primary developer of the housing project next door on collaborating in terms of drainage, which will mostly be our financial responsibility in our property, but we'll work with some of the gradients of their property to help feed into the same culvert. And yeah, put down some gravel, some aesthetically natural wooden fencing. And yeah, just some gravel to help with the drainage and be able to serve people safely and comfortably. And yeah, oh, one last thing. The Chris, we are talking about lights. The lights won't be above head. We're thinking of just lining the fence with some soft yellow Christmas bulbs that are weatherproof that will be also shut off in the evening. So that's about what I have based on my notes and would love to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you, Chris. Very good. Does anyone, any of the planning commission members have any questions for Chris or town staff? Just, just questions at this point. We'll have discussion later after we hear from the public. Any questions?
Steve, it's Roger.
Yes, yes Roger.
How many tables are going to be in the patio?
Um, right now, based in our drawings, which are, are not set in stone, you know, we would, we're going to use this once we get approved to do the necessary architectural and if, if we get approved, the necessarily architectural and all the plans. But I can see on the screen, yes, we do have six picnic tables for six people. And then there would be two or three standing wine barrels also out there to eat our.
Okay, one more question, not really part of the process of the SRU, but the big blue trailer, does that gotta be there or what's that used for?
Um, you broke up a little bit. Did you say the big blue storage unit? Is that what you asked?
Yes, trailer, storage unit.
That very attractive blue thing on our property?
Yeah, it's lovely looking.
Um, I meant, we are blessed with being quite popular. And, you know, we distribute throughout Colorado primarily. Sorry. Hey, excuse me. Would you please stop barking? Um, I'm trying. So we are, we, we do canning every week and essentially that trailer is housing our canning machine, which we've recently purchased or in the process of purchasing. We house cans, which if you can imagine the, here is a single can. If you can imagine this not filled with beer, this is essentially a piece of metal that's holding and things. So when you have thousands and thousands of cans, it takes up space, which we've outgrown. In addition to the patio, we are also planning on an expansion of our production space, which we've also communicated with Rick Hendrickson on that. And we do not have to go through any kind of process. It's just a permit. But through this, there are some aspects of that production space that we do have to consider. The main one being we have to install a commercial grade sprinkler based on the square footage footprint, which we are planning on doing and working with the local fire department. So the ultimate plan for that blue unit is to remove it once we are able to spend the necessary funds and get the funding for this expansion. With that being said.
Let me just, Miranda, I just wanted to chime in to Commissioner Cornell, is that they do have approval for that storage container that has been arranged with Chris Klein. Those town staff are aware and we signed off on it. So at the moment, they're approved for a year and then we will assess based on the expansion whether or not there's a continued need in the future. But I think what Chris is alluding to is that it will not be there forever.
Thank you, Harry. Between the two of you, you gave a very, very good answer.
And if, if, if we do keep it, which, you know, depending on how it is with our expansion, we are thinking about ways to visually hide it, which would include a different placement as well as painting it to match our building. Ideally, we'd like to find an offsite place locally where we could store some cans. But that's, that's the short answer. We'd love to get rid of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, hi Chris. This is Jim Reese. I had a question for you. So I didn't see anything in there in your plan about noise. I, I know that the fence is supposed to help with that, but are you planning on having any outside speakers or pumping any music or, or live musicians on your patio?
Um, the answer would be no outside speakers. The answer would be no outside speakers. As we've done now, we've had a little Bluetooth speaker where we've done decibel tests and we are not, it is not perceivable anywhere close at the end of our property. So if we do have music, it would be extremely light and barely audible outside the confines of the patio. If we were to do live music, it would not be something that we do without a noise permit or an event permit. So we would have to go through the necessary measures with the town in order to achieve that. But generally, the answer would be no. And we will, we've worked with Miranda on this as well as we're very considerate of the the noise that is generated. We're also thankful that our, our clientele is very respectful, largely working professional and family based, who are just casually there to relax and have a beer and we have not dealt with a single noise complaint on the patio in the almost year that we've operated this temporary patio. So anything that we do will be well within the decibel range. And if we decide to do an event, we will go through the necessary town permit measures and I will personally, in many cases, go to the neighbors and invite them down for the event or just give them a warning, hey, at this time, you might hear a little music, but that's not something we've done outside. And if we did, we'd get a noise permit for it, for the time being.
Thanks, Chris. And I could tell that you've definitely been engaging with your neighbors based on 27 letters of recommendation. That, that's amazing. I couldn't believe they were all positive. So I can see you've been really working with the neighbors there. One other question I had was I see that you've had a parking attendant when it's been busier to help direct your, your parking to make sure that they get maximized amount of space. Is there any plan to try and outline the parking spots or in, in any way, I don't know how that would be with spray paint or with some string and cinder blocks like Ron's planning to do, or is that going to be mostly done with cones based on capacity?
So I'm not sure how familiar you are with our property or if you've seen us on the weekends. But generally, and mostly Saturday is the time, but generally what we, what we've experienced largely is winter. We have to plow our property in a certain way in order to maximize that space. We feel that cement parking blocks, aside from being quite expensive, that we could do that job better and create a better space recognition with just proper plowing and a parking attendant. We do use cones. They are movable. They're bright. We also just, we've also put in some, they're about five feet tall, orange. They're about the size of a pen, maybe just vertically that mark, excuse me, that mark where our culvert is. That's something we could do. That would be also cost feasible as well as but I really do think with the funky nature of our lot, in the summer, this is something that we could do a little easier, but in the winter, we have to meticulously plow by a certain time on weekends to ensure that people, I mean, the idea is largely to get people the ability to follow lines. So we will park cars in certain areas that people don't think, they just follow. Cause you'd be surprised about how many people just do what the other person's doing. Go figure. But, you know, for example, if, if we, it's five cars in an area, if they're parking north to south, without that marker cars, sometimes we'll get people who park east to west and that is two cars. So really being on it when we're busy is the primary factor for us. And it's been successful. So we don't feel the need personally to add parking blocks. And if for some reason that changes, we're more than willing to have that conversation.
Okay. I appreciate the, the explanation. There's great pictures. You guys did a great job of putting together this packet that show your guy out there lining up the cars. So I'm guessing that anytime you expect it to be busy, then you're planning on having somebody that could direct them and get them parked the right way. Cause I know exactly what you're saying. If one person starts off with the wrong orientation, then everybody kind of follows.
That parking guy is me in the photos, by the way. So I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm personally out there. We've since hired a guy who's been born and raised here and lives in Ward and, um, you know, he's well versed in the area and knows the fire department and the police department and he is helping to lighten my load. But in the event that say he's sick or something, myself or Chris Klein or our staff is very adaptable to really approach any situation we need in a timely manner to get it done. So thank you, Jim. I appreciate those comments.
Yes, thanks for your comments. And no signage that you put up that shows where not to park, I thought was also very good. So clearly you're, you're trying to be respectful of the neighbors.
We are.
Good. Thank you. This, this is Steve again. So I just had a quick question regarding access to the patio. So do I understand correctly that to get to the patio, you have to come through the building? Is that correct?
We do plan on having a an entrance from the, the parking lot as it stands now. If from an occupancy standpoint, we might have people just coming through the building, but I believe that maybe Miranda or Rick Henrickson could correct me on this. I believe we do need some kind of fire egress for the patio. So we might have that as an emergency exit, but still have people enter from the building. That way we can control how many people are out there more easily.
This is on their, their site. Here, I'm, I'm trying to circle it. I don't know if you can see it. I believe it's on here, but they will need this egress for emergency purposes. And then like Chris is saying, it'll really be a applicant, whether or not that becomes an entrance point or if they want to funnel everyone through the main doors.
Yeah, I was sort of curious how you control access to the, to the patio, both for, you know, legal reasons as, as well as emergency. So, and then of course that raises the second question that in the event of, you know, severe weather or whatever, people won't then be funneled back through the building to get to their cars. They just go through this emergency egress. Is that correct?
Yes. To get back to their cars, they go through the emergency egress. And to answer that, another part of your first question, on very busy days, our parking attendants will be visually assessing, you know, the event where someone on our patio is just not thinking and decides to walk out with a beer. Hey, you can't do that. Make sure you get back to where we need you, liquor license, all that stuff. And he will be visually assessing that as well as our taproom staff. But yeah, the, the fire department and we, we have that as an emergency egress in the event of weather.
Okay. Yeah, that was my final question was regarding, how do you control or monitor people leaving the, the patio with a beer and going back into the parking area?
If, if we're that busy right now too, right now, we typically on busy days have three staff and a parking person. Depending on the moment or, and that also includes myself or Chris Klein being there on top of the three bartenders and the parking guy. We're constantly doing rounds to pick up empty glassware and visually assessing where people are at, making sure they're wearing masks where they need to be and just overall the flow of the taprooms. We will be visually assessing that every few minutes during our rounds.
Okay. Yeah. Sort of related to the total building occupancy. So Miranda, a question for town staff. So people are going to be coming in and out from the patio. And if the building is full, like people are coming in to go to the restroom or whatever, or through the building to leave, that's, that's okay with town staff if, even if the occupancy is pretty well maxed out?
Yeah. Cause that's really through traffic, you know, even if someone goes to the restroom and then they're going to come back out. Rick did not have a concern. It's once, if people then stopped to linger, it would be on the knotted root team to make sure that they are, are asking the person to either leave to, to exit because they were heading out or to go back to the area on the patio that they were. But that's assuming that they're already at their, their occupancy, which I, you know, I believe there, there is a good flow at the building in which people kind of can move through. And so I'm not sure how often they're at their occupancy. I don't know, Chris, if you can assess that. But I would, my, my assumption is that there, even now, because they have outdoor spaces, that a lot of people on nice days are choosing to, to be outside.
Um, I can comment on that. During COVID, it's been at varying degrees of reduced capacity. Most recently where it's felt the most normal, which I'm, I'm very excited about. The majority of our staff is vaccinated and I'm happy that most of the front range is seemingly taking this more seriously than many places in the country. But really the, we, we have not had a single issue with that at reduced capacity with we, if we're close, we do head counts and the parking guy is already set up to also be some kind of an occupancy control. He has a walkie talkie and kind of radios back if there's a larger group of people outside. And if we need to, you know, we're willing to hire a door person who can help at capacity, check IDs at the door. And I mean, that's another job that we've discussed bringing on during the summer. We may not need that in the winter months or during mud season, but we are anticipating being busy this summer and understandably so. I think people are, um, you know, ready to be out and be human again. And, um, you know, we, we, we've taken every measure that we can to make sure we can plan for any kind of event that may arise. That doesn't mean something will come our way that we don't or have not foreseen, but everything that we've experienced based on almost two years of business has given us perspective and experience to, to I think handle anything that comes our way. And, um, you know, we're very excited to be working with the town to any, anything that we need. They've been very outgoing and understanding on where we're at and that's just great as a local business. So we're going to continue to do that and manage this to the best of our ability.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to, do you want to say anything more about overflow parking? It sounds like there were some discussions either with the church or perhaps with the community center. You want to say anything about that?
Absolutely. Um, so based on an agreement that I believe was around 10 years ago, the Presbyterian lot, which is off Third Street is public use parking other than times on Sunday mornings when they have, excuse me, um, their service. So we reached out to the church and asked them if they would be willing to use that. We didn't know that it was public parking, but, um, Mark Stringfellow and Gwen, I forget her last name, but she is the administrator at the church, said that is public parking. You can use that whenever we're not doing masks. Help yourself. So we did have, we do have a verbal agreement with that. Because it's public parking, they didn't feel the need to put that in writing. And I've also had a meeting with Dawn Baumhaber, who is the coordinator at the community center and obviously been a part of a Netherlands Community Center for a long time. And if we need any additional overflow parking with proper notice and a small fee to the town, she said she would be more than willing to work with us to handle that parking. The one issue that came up with that was we did not feel comfortable having people walk down the peak to peak highway from the community center. So we decided that if we were to do that, maybe an anniversary party or something. Our anniversary is on July 4th, so it's kind of two large events at once. We will draft maps that will make sure they know where the the trail off of the community center is from Third Street. And they can take that and safely walk down that trail down Third Street to our tapping location. So we have multiple options for for overflow parking as it stands. We also encourage people to park at the RTD lot or in town or, um, you know, we are slightly removed, but we're not that far. And if you know where to go, it can be a very pleasant walk. So we get a lot of locals who bike, come directly from the bike trails off Caribou and up there and they lock their box on our bike racks and they like their, sorry, lock their bikes. And yeah, we've we feel through those both avenues that that is more than enough to handle any kind of overflow parking.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commission members have any questions for Chris or the staff?
I have questions. This is Karen. And, um, uh, yeah, I appreciate the very thorough application, Chris, and also that you gave us a little bit of an overview on your drainage plan. My questions have to do with traffic. So one of the approval criteria and conditions for a special review use is that it minimizes adverse impacts on adjacent properties and traffic flow. I don't think we've seen the full extent of increased traffic due to your 50% increase in number of seats with the patio. Because of COVID, because of the reduced capacity with COVID. So so as far as the, the traffic is concerned, we did get a letter from Manny Pappich saying that she has seen spillover parking on Third and speeders on Third due to, and this is traffic to and from knotted route. It's the impression that I got. And she said there's children playing in this street. So I'm wondering if there's some way we can discourage the use of Third Street for patrons of knotted route. And then the other traffic issue I'm thinking about is the increased traffic making a left-hand turn onto Highway 72 from knotted route. And there, I'm, I'm concerned about safety because the Highway 72 is a higher speed route. And of course we want the traffic going on to 72 and not Third Street. So I guess my question is both for Chris and for town staff if these traffic flow issues have been discussed.
So this is Miranda. I met, Marshall John did not express. So then I, I think it's, it's tough because, you know, that we can't, I don't, I don't feel that the applicant can really control the way in which traffic comes because there's, there's a chance that they're turning on to Third Street even from the roundabout. So I know historically Chris has done, you know, slow down signs like that has happened off of First Street. And when needed, Public Works can step in and provide those. And I believe he did so perhaps last year or the year before. And so that's one way. Just not even for knotted route traffic, but just for any traffic on Third Street to encourage a slowdown. And then in terms of, you know, even making it where, you know, you can't turn left would require CDOT approval. And so I think some of these things might be beyond the purview of the applicant and would need to involve the, the police department and CDOT for assessment and Public Works. Um, but Chris, I'll turn it over to you if you have some thoughts from you as the But Chris, I'll turn it over to you if you have some thoughts from you as the applicant.
I do. I'm sorry, I'm walking. I realize my phone's at 4%. So I'm desperately trying to charge it, which I found a charger. So bear with me one sec, please. And yes, I will mirror your sentiment. So I will say that we were operating at full capacity before COVID. And we are quite busy under reduced capacity with COVID. We have not had a single issue on the peak to peak highway. We have Mandy Pappage is a friend of ours. We, and I discuss with her and her husband Scott regularly. Life, things at the brewery, everything. You know, she did mention some concern. She also mentioned in her letter that she very much supported our patio. We also have had a lot of people on Third Street mention that they've seen no increase in traffic. I would say largely the increase in traffic on Third Street, yes, some of it is from knotted route, but I would say with confidence, 95% of our traffic enters and exits on Lower Fourth Street off the peak to peak highway. We've also had in our website, since we've opened, please enter and exit from our entrance off the peak to peak highway. Nobody really reads in general anymore. I hope that changes. But we very much, we have signs in our brewery. This is also something that a parking person could help with. I'd be happy to work with the town to put up temporary signs on busy Saturdays along Third Street. But we actively patrol that ourselves to the best of our ability. But I don't believe people are speeding a lot down Third Street in direct relation to the brewery. And I don't believe that the patio would impact that in any significant way. You know, we're also in a generally commercial zone directly off of a highway in a town that is and, you know, I think the best thing for us is to be proactive and discuss these measures and keep it in mind. But we discuss with our neighbors almost on, I would say, a bi-weekly or monthly basis. Just even check in, hey, how's it going? Let me know if you got any thoughts or anything. How's this new parking thing working out? We've had some examples of people parking on the street on Third Street, which I believe is allowed, but also something that we actively try to not have occur. And with our parking signs, the attendants and doing all that, we've absolutely minimized that and eliminated it and will continue to do so. So, you know, through this whole process, the notion of communicating with our neighbors directly, putting up signs, hiring a parking person, this only means we're actively working together, which I think is what community is about. And also I just think ultimately you can't please everyone at every moment of every day. So we're going to do our best. If people choose to drive down Third Street, they have every right to. I would hope they have respect for our neighborhood and dirt roads, that they drive the 15 mile per hour speed limits. And yes, Miranda mentioned the CDOT. I would love to see that portion of the peak to peak highway brought down to 25 miles per hour. That's my opinion. I have no direct impact on that, but I certainly hope that is the case. If I can help in any way, I would be happy and more than willing to do so.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Yeah, I see a lot of proactive actions going on with your business. But I just felt I needed to bring that up because I do see that the capacity is increasing by 50% and the traffic relations. But I think you're, you know, if you're aware of this and just, you know, keeping an eye on it, that's, that's all I would ask for. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Linda, and I think that I just have a comment on the, what you were just discussing. I think we previously, when Chris first applied, we spoke in depth about the traffic and the parking. And Chris, at that time, was very proactive in working with the neighbors as well. So I think he has addressed this several times and it's been in a positive way.
Can you guys see me? Okay, I'm sorry, something happened, but I can hear you. So if you're okay with continuing, I can hear you just fine.
Okay, any other questions? Before we go to public comment?
Hey, Steve, it's Roger. Could I make a very quick comment to, about the discussion we just had in the speed limits?
Yes, you may.
So Miranda and staff, I thought what they just talked about, they have a 25 miles an hour. It's something that actually came and put up these signs a couple of years ago and, you know, all the new street signs. But long story short, though, in all the town, when you come through the roundabout, within 25, 50 feet, there's a 35 mile an hour sign right there, right by the Presbyterian Church. And I, you know, actually knotted route, I actually put in the application, but I think it's something I would like staff and Larry Johns, I actually ought to just recommend. I've actually, I guess, once actually briefly talked to them, but we actually should really push to have 25 miles an hour all the way around the corner until the road actually gets past the community center.
Yeah, Marshall Johns is actually already working on that.
Well, let's just people, and that's my only comment, all the way to the community center, Forest Road is where it should change to 35.
Yeah, sorry, it is staying on his radar.
Fantastic.
Making efforts towards that. I mean, obviously it takes time to change speed limits. It doesn't happen overnight, but for them too. And so, you know, if we're at a point in which we need, you know, public support, we obviously know that Chris is willing to step in and provide that too. And so I'll let Larry know, but he's working on it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anything else, anyone?
Chris here. I've acknowledged and agree with a lot of the other questions that have been asked, but I just have one simple one. If you're building a patio and you have your canning facility in a 40 foot by storage container out front, why aren't you going for building a bigger building or area to put your canning in or have your canning inside the building to begin with? So that your patio can be on that side of the building where it'll be easier to get in and out of.
You're a little spotty, but did I hear, why would we put our patio there if we're storing our canning unit outside?
Right.
I touched on this briefly earlier. We are working on expanding our building. The temporary storage unit that we use to house our canning line was a couple thousand dollars. Expanding our building is a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's a little bit more of a procedure. Architects, structural engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, applying for a building permit in town, making sure we're meeting setbacks that are based on town code and general commercial zoning. We are doing that. So the goal will be to put that in there. The idea of putting our patio where it exists now is to reduce the impact on our neighbors because it's on the north side of the building. We are closer to more people on the east and the southeast side. So we want to be as far away from them and put the building in between us to help block noise as well as not lose any parking, because that's where we do a decent amount of our parking as well as a commercial unloading of materials. So it makes the most sense for our building to put out the patio where we've had it and expand east in order to meet our canning needs.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Chris. Anybody else?
This is Billy. I just wanted to say, great proposals, apparently lots of support. It's, you know, interesting and good to see some of the people who are pretty opposed to the little bear duplexes on board with this idea when some of their complaints were traffic and noise. Clearly, you've already established you're a good neighbor, which glad to see. And in the offsite parking, you were mentioning 26 spaces of, or 20 some. Okay, and what they are, the ones you just described, the church and the community center?
Oh, no, that's legal street parking on Lower Fourth Street.
Fourth Street, okay.
As well as a couple spillover that the property, our property line versus the town street visually is blurred. If you were to just look at it, there's no clear definition. So our property ends around the culvert. We can fit about six spots on that edge as well as Lower Fourth Street through the use of the cones and the parking attendants. We have about a 25 or so foot roadway, which is, you know, Rick Hendrickson's one comment was just, we need to be able to get a fire truck in and out of here in the case of emergency. So that's kind of our base on how we organize parking is making sure we can get a fire truck and maybe even a little bit more of a buffer just for comfort. And then also being 30 feet from the stop sign in the roadway that we manage with cones and visual management. So, yeah, I mean, we've gotten creative and it's an interesting problem to have when you are trying to organize that many cars of people who really are coming to support our business and other businesses in town. And, yeah, we've, we're really happy with the current state of where all that is and, you know, thankful that the town is willing to work with us and allow us to get creative to, you know, meet this demand in a safe and responsible way.
So Chris, just for oh, excuse me. Just to clarify, the 30 parking spaces that are required by the town code are on your property? They're not on Fourth Street? Is that correct?
That is correct. We mentioned we have an additional 20, mid 24 to 26, depending on exactly how cars park themselves. You know, part of our parking manager's role is to instruct people to park as close as they can to another car with the ability of comfortably getting in and out of their vehicle. If we don't tell them to park closer, sometimes there's a five, six foot gap between cars and that adds up. So, yes, we have 31 spaces on site with the way that we're currently organizing parking.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else? If not, we'll open it up for public comment. Again, Chris, I want to congratulate you on the number of letters we received on this application. So if there's anyone else out there that hasn't either submitted some written comment or they'd like to add to what they have, you have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and address and we'll go from there.
Yeah, so Kathleen Chabai, she's not able to verbally give her comment, but she emailed a test, so I'd like to read that into the record. Kathleen Chabai, 30-year familiar resident and 17-year business owner. I'm in full support of knotted route SRU being passed. And that's the comment. And I do, there is a call-in user that I muted, so I do just want to make sure that person knows to press star six if they have a desire to speak.
Okay, and Miranda, also, I think you sent out an email late this evening with some additional comment? Or is that?
I did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the commission was aware of that.
Yeah, there was a comment regarding both, so you need to open the attachment. And then also, as noted, they, knotted route did receive letters. And then also kind of we stuck in here as well, a petition that was signed that had a pretty substantial amount of signatures on it as well.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, having heard none, I will close the public comment. We'll come back to the planning commission for any further discussion. And so I'll open it up then to the commissioners. Anyone wish to add anything else or any other questions that they didn't have before?
This is Karen. I just have lots of kudos for knotted route. You know, their application is really thorough. Their sustainability efforts, you know, they've been successful. Congratulations on that. They're doing a great job working with the neighborhood and community and supporting artists and musicians. And I appreciate the petition and all the letters of support and them being proactive with parking management plan and also with the in traffic that I think will increase.
Okay, I will certainly echo that as well. Anyone else? Okay. If there's no further discussion, do we have a to approve the SRU application?
I'll make a motion to approve this application, Billy.
Okay, do we have a second?
It was either Karen or Chris.
Chris.
Okay.
Okay, Cynthia, will you take the vote, please?
Sure enough. Chair Williams?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Gitlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Prue?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Chris Marchio and Chris Klein.
Very good, and thank you for all your hard work.
We are so thankful to be a part of this community and thank you very much for your support. Thank you, appreciate it.
We're glad you're here, too.
And then Miranda will work with you on the date for the Board of Trustees.
Sounds great. Cheers.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, next action item. This is the consideration of a public hearing and special review use. application related to outdoor sale eating and drinking use for the Caribou Room at 55 Indian Peak Drive and submitted by the Compound Corporation, doing businesses as the Caribou Room. Again, just to throw out a reminder to the Planning Commission that if anyone has a conflict of interest or feels they cannot be fair or impartial on this agenda item, please speak now. Having heard none, I will ask Miranda to introduce this application.
Thank you. So before tonight is an application from the Fiore Brothers Enterprises, as well as Compound Corporation, which does business as the Caribou Room. We have Kimba and Mandy here too, as representing the applicant. But this is to propose outdoor sales, eating and drinking in the parking lot that surrounds the building. The applicant purchased this property in 2015, and it is currently used as an event space. And so they are in general commercial. Again, similar under commercial use, they can go forward for an SRU for outdoor sales, eating, drinking, or other commercial activities or establishments. Similar to Noted Root, the Caribou Room also has a temporary modification of premise that came under COVID times when we did a declaration of emergency. So they put their application in and were provided that permit on June 12th, and they too have maintained it for a year. So similar to the last applicant, they've had that year to be able to really test to see if this works. Last summer, they held a series of outdoor events, which allowed their patrons to eat and drink alcohol while also listening to music or whatever the other item was that occurred outdoors. And they were very successful. There were some concerns that were brought forward about noise. The applicant was very eager to address those issues. And really, for every event they had, they primarily pulled noise variances, even if it wasn't necessary, because their events didn't reach the decibel level. They felt that it was best to do so because noise variances require a public noticing, where we put it out on Facebook and our website that that was pulled, hence the people are aware ahead of time. But again, a lot of times when doing the reading, it did not reach above the decibel level needed to pull it. But I think that just kind of shows the neighborliness of that decision, of making sure that they are being transparent with what they're doing. So with the spot, it is on a part of the property where they're surrounded by forest and then also highway. The nearest building is about to, is approximately, sorry, approximately 100-foot setback from the property line, and then it's 450 feet from the nearest home. What they want to do is to kind of structure this similarly to how they did in COVID times, where people would come in, they would reserve a spot, whether it was a parking spot or a pod, and then they would stay within their spot. And so they don't lose parking in this plan. They just utilize their parking as spaces where their patrons can be. So it doesn't necessarily change kind of the footprint or the impact of their building. They have substantial parking. And again, this doesn't remove any of that parking. They currently have 210 spaces that surround their whole building. So it's just more maximizing that area and allowing it to be used for different uses. They don't anticipate needing to add more staff, but if they needed to, they still could comply with parking code. Their goal is to begin to host these outdoor events in May or June. And again, we'll continue to pull noise variances when needed. The applicant also has a sustainability manifesto, which is in the packet, which is how they outline where they feel they're consistent with a comprehensive plan. And there really is no impact to utilities or other town services. The applicant does a great job of making sure that parking is maintained on their property and not on the road outside. And again, because the space is so large, they really can accommodate this additional use. But I'll go ahead and turn it over to Kimba or Mandy if you want to add more.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kimba. Peter sends his regrets that he couldn't be here this evening as part of the meeting, and thank you so much for the consideration and the time. I am the house manager at the venue, and I also hold the liquor license, so that's why I'm here representing the Caribou Room tonight. And as Miranda summed up very well, we are just asking to, you know, requesting to be able to have outdoor sales and for eating and drinking in our enclosed parking area outside of our building. Colorado in the summer is just the place to be and to be able to be outside enjoying that rather than inside in a dark space is just great for the community. And, you know, we do other events, not just music, but we have weddings and things like fundraisers, you know, nonprofit stuff, and even memorials. We've had a couple of those. So, yeah, we're just asking to be able to expand out into our parking area.
And one thing I forgot to mention, but Kimba, thanks for bringing that up, is the liquor license. So currently with town, the liquor license is held within the building. Caribou Room did apply for a modification of premise with the state, and the liquor licensing authority did issue that. So if in order to continue to do, to serve alcohol outside, it will need to go before the Board of Trustees for that local license. But I did include in the packet that state has already accepted that their full premise for their license includes their parking.
Right. And I also did want to say, make a correction, that the building, the property was purchased in May of 2013. It says 2015 in the packet. And our first show was in February of 2016. So it was about three years to develop and construct the venue as it is now. So just wanted to make that correction as well.
Okay, Amanda, do you have anything to add?
Hi there. I could add a little bit. We were just finishing our fifth year when COVID hit. And, you know, our industry just shut down completely. And that was quite disturbing and hard to see around it. And when the town offered the temporary use of our outdoor facilities, it really helped us to kind of keep ourselves out there as a business. However, we did close again in September or at the end of September, because, you know, it just wasn't viable to be outside in the middle of winter in the windy Netherlands area. But, you know, the long and short is, is it will be, it will be several years before we can recover from these months of being closed. And being able to permanently operate outdoors for events, like Kimba said, weddings or memorials, I mean, we've already had a temporary permit before to have an event that we had to pay to the state that was like hundreds of dollars just for that event after, you know, to flow into the outdoors and the patio under the awning. And so we just think that it would be more sustainable for us to long-term plan and to have all seasons operate up here instead of instead of having to close down in the summertime, because, you know, people just don't really necessarily want to be inside, you know, during the beautiful summer months. But that's about all I can add right now.
Yeah, we also don't, we don't really know when we're going to be able to open inside again at full capacity. So we're still operating at a major deficit here and just trying to figure out ways to survive. Like Mandy said, it's going to take years to recover. You know, the music business took such a hard hit with COVID, and we definitely felt it. And, yeah, you know, when we're up and running, we've got 18 employees that we are all local. And we really want to, you know, help these people keep the jobs up here in the community and also bring the community, you know, more arts and culture and events that bring, you know, bring that kind of stuff into the town of Netherlands.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So let's see, any questions from the Planning Commission members? We'll open it up for the public comment. And again, we'll come back after that for discussion later. But any questions right now?
I have a couple. So, Kimba, how many of the 210 parking spaces do you think you'll use for the outdoor concerts? I know.
So, yeah. Yeah, last summer, we have 43 parking spots or 43 areas that we sell. We have a total of 210 parking spots, but we just sell the 43 pods or areas during the outdoor shows that we did last summer.
And so this summer, that's your plan as well, to do about 43?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. And then I have something for Jennifer Mattson. In the special review use agreement, it uses the words outdoor patio. And I believe you want to use the same wording as we have in the temporary agreement, which is outdoor live concerts.
I'm pulling that up right now.
Okay, this would be on page 109. The third paragraph.
I actually just pulled up the SRU agreement separately, so it's not numbered.
The first page of the SRU agreement, the third paragraph. It mentions an outdoor patio.
Yeah, so we have the awning that's just outside the front door. That might be what that's referring to, is just that, that's some area when you first come in. And then the stage that we had last summer, we, you know, moved the location around and put it, you know, on the northwest corner of the building. It's temporary. There's nothing going to be outside that's permanent at all. We just did that for the, you know, summer shows that we did last year.
Yeah, I'm just for, I want to make sure that we, we have the correct wording in the, in the use permit. And I'm looking at the temporary use permit. The third paragraph, which says the town grants to the licensee a temporary use permit to use the licensed property for commercial outdoor live concerts and for the sale of food and beverage for consumption by patrons of the licensee. So it's more than an outdoor patio. That needs to be licensed, I believe.
We can make that change.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I, that's all I have. Great job. I love the recycling and composting, and I think we can use that for a model for other businesses in town. So I'm on the zero waste team. So I want to talk to someone over at the Caribou Room, not, not in this meeting, but.
Great, yeah, thank you. We worked really hard with that, with being, with the solar and, you know, all of our food and drink supplies, everything is compostable or recyclable. Nothing goes into the landfill whatsoever. That's very, very important to us, the sustainability piece.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Sorry.
Anything else?
I just also wanted to mention that we do have a lot of letters of support, but we didn't submit them for this meeting. We have them for a future BOT meeting, so just to let you know.
Okay. Got to keep up with the Noted Root.
I know, that's amazing.
Anyone else? Any other commissioners have any questions at this point? So I had a quick question myself. So it was still kind of unclear to me what your hours are. Could you clarify that a bit?
Sure. So last summer, for the shows we did, music generally started around 5:30 and was always over by dark or before dark, sometimes even earlier, you know, 7:30 often. So, you know, we definitely would, even if we had a different event, like a wedding or something, it would, we would only want to go until dark in the summer, which obviously, you know, builds toward the peak of summer and then tapers off again in the fall. So we never went past dark.
So that's around like nine o'clock at the latest, something like that?
Peak of summer, yeah. You know, we'd want to, you know, according to, I guess, town code, we could go until 10:00, but it generally didn't. We didn't. So we usually are, were completely done by dark, is how it worked last summer.
Sorry, it's Miranda. We lost Chris Paray, myself, and Roger. We're all back now.
Okay. Did Roger or Chris, did you have any questions?
No, this is Roger. I have no questions. I just have comments when we get there.
Okay. All right, any other questions before we open it up for public comment? Okay, very good. Let's, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone out there who wishes to speak? You have three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
So Kathleen Chaffey had emailed another comment that I'll read into the record. Kathleen Chaffey, 30-year East Magnolia resident and 17-year business owner. I'm in full support of Caribou Room, SRU being passed. I'm excited to come dance my butt off again.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the the public comment part and open it back up to the Planning Commission. As we go around for discussion, just a quick reminder, though, to, you know, make sure that you address any of the criteria of the SRU as well. Is any other questions or concerns? So anyone have, have any discussion to bring?
Well, Steve, I certainly do, if no one else wants to go.
Okay, go ahead, Roger.
My fellow commissioners, yes, please be patient with me and give me just a little bit of time to explain. I'd like to bring a little history to you, if I could, very quickly. This project has gone full cycle on me, and I'm actually having some issues with it. And the Caribou Room's history actually started in the early 90s when Glenn Cole, who was a contractor, and had his trucks and his business located there, basically where the fire department's parking lot is there off of Second Street or Third, Second Street. He built a building and remodeled his, his building on a non-conforming lot and got a quick okay from the town administrator. His name was Ken. I actually can't remember his last name. But that was challenged and went to an appeal. And the Board of BZA actually had a meeting. It took quite a while, and they ruled that indeed that Glenn's building was actually non-conforming, and he shouldn't have been given the permit. But he'd already had the building built, about 95%. And I don't know exactly what happened. I was not on the Board of Trustees. I was actually in the Planning Commission. And the BZA knew about that ruling. But then he, there was probably some lawyers involved and some lawsuits. there was probably some lawyers involved and some lawsuits and back and forth. And when the Mud Lake was devised, uh, as, as a settlement, the, the town ruled that, well, whenever they would have a chance to have a lot, they would give Lynn a piece of property to move his shop. So when Mud Lake was devised, he was given one of the, the, uh, two acres, so he was part of the project to move Mud Lake, move his shop up into Mud Lake. That's actually where in two thousand I got involved with the planning commission. Again, my second time around or my third time around. And originally Lynn's coal and the town shop was going to be where the ice rink is. That was the plan. Now, actually was a plan there to actually move the propane tanks far in there also. Or I got shot down immediately and through some other talks, I said that that's absolutely crazy to have Lynn Cole and all, and the town shop trucks drive all the way into our Indian Peak subdivision, that they should be out there by the road. And so actually, uh, Rich Tolson, who was a trustee and myself, we actually worked with Ron Stewart, uh, and actually it probably was the first amendment to Mud Lake. And there's been many, many agreements since then. So, that kind of brought us to, uh, when Lynn left, um, the Terrible Room actually moved in, and Lynn sold the property there, but they said two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. And there was some actually, some serious hearings and a lot of work with the neighborhood to get that project done. And Peter actually made several commitments, many commitments. And some of them was, you know, that the entertainment would be totally indoors. And they, we even went as far as, uh, there, there wouldn't be any, any patio or any people loitering around out there. And the parking attendant, actually at the end of the concert, we get people into their cars and down the road safely. And their business plan worked very well and, and, and Peter in the Caribou Room did a fantastic job for all those years. Until last year, because of COVID, they started the outdoor concerts. And they, the abstract said that there was no complaints. Well, I certainly went down and complained right away. The noise and the commotion from the music is, well, it just sounds like, uh, you know, it sounds like a, a band, a band fest, a music fest, the way you would think. You'd actually have to be there or adjacent to it to understand. So the reason why you haven't gotten very many complaints is because none of, none of the residents actually live three hundred feet away. I'm about a thousand feet away. And on any given Friday or Saturday after the evening, you know, if it's a nice evening, I say to my wife Karen, let's go out and look at a sunset. You hear a kaboom, kaboom, kaboom. There, there's a rock and roll music fest going on a thousand feet away. And they, if they try to say that they are within the sound limits, well, I find that hard to believe. I have actually walked, uh, two thousand feet to the southeast. There's a beautiful meadow that we walk over there in the evenings, it's actually on Jackie and, excuse me, Jason's property. And, you know, sit over there in the evening, and I would say that that's probably over three thousand feet from the Caribou Room. And you can hear, clearly hear kaboom, kaboom, kaboom. And the, the bass and the drum, the drum kit, you just can't hide that. We have been up to the skate park, the ice rink and the tennis courts where they play pickleball. And you can hear the music quite louder, you actually know, oh yeah, they're playing a Grateful Dead song. You can hear very clearly, you can hear all the words, you hear the drum kit and the bass. You, uh, I've gone down to Mud Lake and you can sit there on one of those beautiful benches there, watch the sunset. And again, you can hear the drums, I mean, I'm not, not hearing, this is not like it's a, um, little cassette player, the way Chris spoke earlier about his picnic area. You know, it sounds like there's a, well, it sounds as I thought it is, there's a band playing right up through the woods. So if you actually add, like I said, the eastern part of the property where I live to, uh, the tennis court, to Mud Lake, you're probably, you're looking at probably about a square mile of area of Forest Street, um, that is impacted, going to be impacted two nights a week by, uh, a music fest. And now, I, I just think that that's, um, that's a tough one to take and it's hard to believe. So last summer, when it first happened, I certainly talked to two board, board members. And I also talked to Town Hall. And, and, you know, explained the situation and the situation was explaining to me, this is an emergency, a COVID nineteen, just chill out. And, you know, these, you know, we need to have the concerts, they need to stay in business. So just be patient. And so that's exactly what my wife and I did. Uh, and I think that's what a lot of people did. But I have to tell you that, um, there's no way that you can have a, a live performance the way they're having and it doesn't go for, uh, half a mile or more and it's, it's very loud and it's overwhelming. The other thing I wanted to say too is, uh, as we just worked on the agreement with Wild Bear and the natural, the nature's, um, business, Little Bear, um, as they're planning their project there and just imagine that people come up there and to be up there in the evening or to take a walk there in the late afternoon to go see the columnines. There's actually some nice wood lilies live back in there, are growing there. But, uh, whatever you may be doing, to go look for birds, just what, what the nature conservancy wants people to do there at, at Wild Bear. And to actually have one of those concerts going, it's just absolutely a conflict. So that, that's actually, one of the ones say to explain it. I totally understand the emergency with the COVID. But I would argue that if you have leftover salmon coming into town to play and that the people will go indoors or outdoors, they see leftover salmon and they certainly did that for four or five, whatever it was, ever since beginning of their plan started. But Peter made unbelievably good commitment to have next to zero impact on the area and he certainly has lived up to that commitment. And if we make this change, he said forty-three cars, it possibly could be more, they say two hundred, so you could have anywhere between two hundred and five hundred people up there on any given evening, you know, and doing this music fest. Just the crowd noise and the commotion, it is absolutely not what was envisioned and it's a huge change in the business plan. And I, I just asked the fellow commissioners to think about this and consider this because, for the residents up this way in the north side of town, it's going to be a huge impact on, uh, their evenings, two nights a week. And it's, believe me, it's huge. And I know we've all had some issues with, you know, living in neighborhoods where things come up. We've just went through years of the accessory dwelling units, you know, we've all heard complaints about what's going on in neighborhoods. Well, I'd like you to consider this as one of the ultimate, uh, complaints and issues that is going to be very, very hard for the people on the north side to live with. So I think that's covered what I want to say. So, thank you for your cooperation, thanks for listening to me a little extra longer.
Okay, thanks Roger. Any other comments or discussion?
Well, I, I have, um, uh, some questions about, the comments, Roger's comments. Um, do we, do we have a copy? I haven't seen the business plan, so I'm wondering if we can get a copy of that. And then, um, the other thing is that, um, you know, I wonder if Caribou Room can do some outreach to their neighbors about the, the outdoor music. Because we heard from Roger, Roger's one neighbor, but I'm wondering what the other neighbors in the community have to say about, um.
Commissioner Blakemore, I think I can answer that. So when, and, and I noted that in the aim that there was a concern and so Roger has clarified that the concern came from him. There actually was outreach to some of the neighbors and while I wasn't able to reach them, all the ones I did reach did not express concern.
Do we have that documented anywhere?
I, I believe I may have it in an email, I have to, I can't, I have to go back and look. I can't recall if it was a phone call or an email, but.
Yeah, I, I'd be interested in knowing how many neighbors were contacted. Now, were they, were the neighbors contacted about this, um, review that we're having now?
Yes, and so I do want to clarify too, they received the public notice. And there aren't a ton of properties within the three hundred square feet boundary, I believe it's, it maybe, maybe you know Mandy, but I think it's six. Just a handful and they all received notices, none came back.
Okay.
And so, but when I reached out, it was when Caribou Room had first received their temporary use permit, and I know Peter Fiore also did outreach at that time to the neighbors that were closest. But the only complaint we have received is, is from Roger, which as you've noted tonight.
Yeah, and he said it, the sound travels a thousand feet. I feel like we need it, um, the, the, um, comments from the neighbors documented somehow, at least the number of neighbors and whether they were positive or negative. So those are my comments. The business plan Roger referred to, I've never seen that. And then, um, just getting documentation on the neighbors' input on the noise.
If I could, I'd certainly think there's one consideration of, you know, while we're still under COVID restrictions, I think there's one thing, but the way I read this application, you know, this is just a one-time shot and if we okay and recommend okaying, it, um, you know, it goes on forever, then that's it, this is our review and I, I think that that's not right. And I, I felt totally handcuffed here when I finally read, you know, on Monday, when I read in the packet, uh, and, and trying to obey the rules and, and keep the quasi judicial, that I could not call the cooks toward the neighbors across the way and Marty, I'd actually, I had the name written down there. But I, I think they're actually the only ones with three hundred feet, I thought that's the way you had read it off, uh, Miranda, is that, you know, the nearest residence was four hundred and fifty feet away. So, uh, maybe the, if you went property lines, um, there really is only one or two. But truly, truly, you can hear this all the way to Mud Lake, you can hear it all the way to, uh, the tennis courts. So it's thousands of feet that you hear the drum kit and the bass playing. It's just like the Ned Fest, how that fills up the entire valley. That's just the nature of, of where we live. And I certainly will tomorrow morning, once I'm not subject to the quasi judicial, I was going to touch base and follow up with, you know, what comments any of the neighbors had. But, you know, I, I did not do that now because, or even give them a phone call because I just absolutely did not want to get started in a conversation. So that's, that's where that sat. And I certainly understand the issue with the COVID, but to, to give a, a cart launch, okay, that this is going to be a, a business plan, I, 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 my personally, that's hard, that's a very hard one.
I want to clarify too, that the agreement that Roger is talking about is their original SRU for mixed use. Sweet Wave Audio is actually dissolved and therefore that SRU is no longer in place because it's no longer a mixed use building. So I'm happy to share it, but I think that needs to be taken into consideration, that is, that is not active.
I understand that, but Peter made commitments to the neighborhood about how he would have live music and we would not hear it. So whether it's, and, and here we are in SRU, so we're doing the exact same process. And he totally committed to, uh, you were hearing nothing from us, I'm a sound expert. That's what Peter's commitment was.
Miranda, why is that agreement no longer valid?
Because they submitted paperwork that there was a dissolution of Sweet Wave Audio. And so this specific agreement was in regards to the mixed use of having the Caribou Room. And then, uh, Sweet Wave Audio, which was a, a business. And I don't know, Sithi, if you can add anything, I wasn't there for it at the time, but if you can comment on that.
But you're, I'm sorry, but you're right, that's accurate, I could see it.
So, so yeah, so we received the dissolution paperwork back in May of last year showing it was no longer, that that business was no longer in place. And therefore it's, it's not considered a mixed use building.
Oh, thank you.
You are correct, you're correct on that, um, Miranda. It was, uh, the, the mixed use portion is what triggered the SRU in the general commercial zone, um, eating and drinking inside and other uses like that are, are allowed by rights.
Right. I don't disagree with that, but we're right back in an SRU, exactly where we are again. So in a lot of ways it's changed. And I don't know that actually someone's not living there, so in some ways it is a mixed use. Because if, there is an apartment there. But that's a whole nother story. But just concentrate on how the application would be and what, what the impact will be on the whole north side of town.
Okay, um, well, it raises a question about how the, the noise is measured. And I'm assuming that, um, the, uh, maybe, um, maybe, uh, Kimba can address that?
I'm sorry, I think Kimba's muted. I'm going to address it actually, we use a calibrated decibel meter to measure, um, the sound on the lot. And we walk to, um, the border of our property line and make sure that we're not, um, breaking the, um, the town sound code. But then, once we have the, um, the sound ordinance or the sound variance that we were getting last summer, we were not going as loud as that was, which I think is like a hundred and five decibels, which is really loud or something similar. And so, um, that's how we can keep control of how, how loud we are being.
The other thing that we do, um, I think I unmuted, yeah. The other thing that we do is, is that we try to book, um, acoustic bands a lot that don't have drums or loud bass so that we're trying to be really conscious of that problem and, um, you know, want to work with Roger and any other neighbor that might have issue, um, with the sound. But we definitely are trying to be conscious of that. And like I said, we, we positioned the stage in the best spot that we could think of as far as sound so that it didn't impact Roger. You know, we moved it to the other side of the building and faced it in a certain direction so that, um, hopefully it wouldn't. so that hopefully it wouldn't bother him. I just did want to say also that we have a great relationship with Wild Bear. They have events at our venue. They use our parking lot sometimes. They, they love the Caribou Room and knew that we were there before they decided to, you know, move into that property. We have a wonderful working relationship with Wild Bear. I do understand your concerns, Commissioner Cornell. I did want to say too, that, you know, you had mentioned 200 to 500 people. That doesn't happen. We have anywhere from 40 people up to maybe 130. You know, I think our biggest show last year, we had 140 people. So that doesn't, you know, that, that isn't really an issue. There isn't, you know, 500 people milling around out there. So, and you know, the events we want to have are like weddings where, you know, we'll have a wedding with, you know, 70, 50 or 75 people. And, you know, they want to be outside and take their pictures and maybe have their cocktails out there and, and that kind of thing and be able to eat their food outside or whatever. So, you know, that's really what we're thinking are, are more events like that. You know, weddings and, you know, fundraisers. We've done some memorials, which we, it's not something we planned, but it's actually been something the community has really utilized and has been grateful for. So, and we do definitely want to work with all the neighbors. We have the support of many of the other neighbors. Sometimes last summer, I would see them actually come down the back hill and up to the fence to listen to the music and be dancing outside the fence out there. The people who had properties that were just over the hill. And, you know, have expressed how much they love the Caribou Room. And yeah, so I just wanted to add those comments.
So, quick question, if, so if, if, once all of the COVID restrictions go away, you, you're not planning to move the music back inside? Is that, is that what you're saying?
We absolutely are. We just don't know in the foreseeable future, you know. Basically, right now, like what we did last summer is we went through the summer. And then when it got cold, we had to shut down completely because we couldn't have shows inside. We have no idea what's going to happen this fall. Hopefully, we're moving in the right direction and we'll be able to move back inside as soon as we can and be able to accommodate enough ticket holders and people inside to actually be viable financially for what it takes to open the business and open the doors. And, you know, because that's a substantial cost. So we're hoping so, but we really don't know what the future will be. But we're, we're planning on it, hopefully moving inside in the, as soon as we can in the fall.
Okay, so then, if that happens, like, like I, I think a lot of people are expecting things to loosen up and Roger's problem goes away. Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
No, Steve, I'm sorry. We are trying to be a fully functional venue and to be able to operate outside and have events outside. I mean, it's been a long, it's been requested multiple times with different events through the years. And when we were about to enter our, when we were finishing our fifth year, we were really looking forward to having a lot of like special events. Like weddings were becoming popular. And some people were discouraged by the fact that we couldn't, you know, we couldn't have something like a cocktail hour outside and everything had to be indoors always. And so that's been a holdback. And so we are, you know, yes, we are at the moment trying to work with the pandemic. But we are looking to be able to use all our space for commerce.
Right, no, I understand that. I was just wondering more about the music than, I'm not worried about the people outside. I was just asking more about the music or particularly the loud bands.
Well, the last few years that we were operating inside, we did have a very reduced summer schedule because it just wasn't commercial, it wasn't viable for us. We weren't making the money we needed to do in order to continue to operate inside. And so we had a very small summer schedule. I mean, we were looking to be closed most of June, July and August. And so if we can have these smaller, you know, where people can hang out and with their cars and meet up with neighbors and eat and drink and see some music, that's not quite the same as what we would offer inside. You know, inside we have a pretty large light rig and it's a major sound system. What we do outside is much smaller scale. And like Kimba said, the bands are more acoustic, bluegrass. We really tried to have lighter music, if you want to call it that, outside, knowing that it can be pretty loud if we have a full rock and roll band, obviously. You know, Roger mentioned leftover salmon and we actually haven't had them yet. And so something like that would definitely never be able to be outside. It is too rock and rolly. It is very loud. And that would be an inside concert. But, you know, really, if you ask people, music goers, what they like to do in the summer is they want to go somewhere outside and hang out and be outside in the beautiful weather and, and still enjoy music. And so, you know, Lyons, Colorado has Planet Bluegrass. And so you can see how they are starting to turn more towards outdoor music as well. Because right now, the industry is just trying to recover in any way possible. I think it's going to take us a lot of years to get back to where we were, hopefully going to be by the end of our fifth year.
Okay, thank you. Any other commission members have any, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Jim Reese. I just wondered, wanted to ask a question of the applicant. So given that you said you were making an effort to try and do acoustic bands and hearing the concerns of Roger and that maybe the amplified music and especially drum kits are a particular issue, would you be willing to amend this agreement and say that you'll only have non-amplified or at least bands, acoustic type bands without drums outside? And then anything that is going to be a rock and roll band with amplified music and drums would be located inside the building?
I mean, I think that we would be open to discussing that for sure, you know, to see, take it into consideration.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, hold on one second. You know, we, we have two speakers outside and we, we do every effort to reduce the amount of noise and stay within the town sound code. Or we get the noise variances, but we can't make those types of, really the market determines what kind of bands we book at the time we book them. And we can't just, you know, cut off the sound. I mean, if we're trying to reach 43 cars, there needs to be some amplification.
Okay, how about an agreement that once COVID restrictions are lifted and you have the full capacity of the building, are you willing to, and let's say we approve you being able to have people eat outside, mingle outside, drink outside, are you willing to amend the agreement to say that there will only be amplified music or drum kits inside, once the COVID restrictions have lifted? Because you've said that this is mainly in relation to reduced business from COVID.
I mean, you know, this is in response to the reduced business from COVID. But as I stated already, we are going to take many years to recover, at least to get back to where we were going to be before COVID. And I don't think a restriction on the types of events or outdoor uses is going to be helpful for us.
You know, Jim, that's a creative idea, but it seems super impractical and kind of not realistic for that kind of a, whatever, idea.
I have a question for Mandy. Mandy, is it typical to, does the Caribou Room hold indoor music during the summer time? Or is that something that's not, hasn't been done in the past? And can you explain the, you know, when the, you know, the hours for the indoor concerts and the hours for the outdoor ones? And when you started doing the outdoor and what seasons there are? You've been holding music? I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Sure. I understand what you're trying to get at. So because of the prior SRU we had, we knew we couldn't operate outdoors. We have been open for shows since February 2016 indoors. And probably around 2018, we realized summer was not as viable. And so I think 2018, we had a pretty heavy summer season, unfortunately. And it was, it was hard to get through because people were not attending. And so I think by 2019, we said, well, let's just go on hiatus in the summer. It gives us some downtime, you know. The indoor music scene is really, really happening from about September to like February. And people are just like really psyched to go to music at that time. There's a lot of larger bands that circle through Colorado around that time, all, all from all over the country. So 2019, I think, was one of our first summers where we said, we're just not going to do shows. And we probably were dark from June until maybe late August, maybe. And then, and then COVID happened. And we were able to operate outside and we got to try this out. And we realized that people really loved it. You know, our kitchen was making out some really great food. So it was a different, it was a different restaurant that people could come and support. And, you know, at first we tried to have just free music and, you know, we did some cool stuff. And then we started to realize that we could really, you know, start making some revenue off of ticket sales outside, especially after we had the temporary use permit approval. And I have to say, last summer was by far our most successful summer. Because all the other summers that we were operating indoors was a challenge. People just really weren't interested. And so last summer was, I mean, I think, I think we sold out like 95% of our shows where people were there because they couldn't go anywhere else. And I, and we get that. And this year might be still somewhat of a challenge that we're, you know, going to see how it works and hopefully it works. But, you know, ultimately, you know, we'd like to be able to, like I said, use the whole facility for, you know, for whatever we can dream up. The indoor shows pretty much ran, you know, music starts maybe at the earliest by nine o'clock. And then where you're going to like 2:00 AM. But the outdoor shows, like Kimba said, we started maybe 5:00, 5:30. People were showing up maybe around 4:30 to get parked and order food and drinks and kind of socialize with their, you know, parking spots next to them. And then, you know, we were not having music any later than I would say nine. Maybe, maybe the longest day of the year, we were open. We, we had music somewhere around 9:30 because, you know, the sun was still, you know, up. And, you know, it was still light enough to see what you were doing. But we don't have lights in the parking lot. So we really can't go into the dark, you know, the dark times because there's just not the ability to, for people to be able to operate outside, you know, and even with their cars. So, you know, the town sound code is quiet at 10:00 PM. And that seems pretty reasonable.
Okay, thanks for, that gives a clear picture of how the Caribou Room operates throughout the entire year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey Steve, it's Roger again.
Okay.
Well, certainly for the short term, we still had COVID. I mean, rather than say that we're going to make an approval, what will ever be reviewed, is it possible that, because I understand that, I understand their issues there. There were like two things though, I mean, that we go three months and we review this in August, the end of August. It turned out before at different times. That would actually give, you know, maybe some of the town people, commissioners and proceeds people will come up here and myself again, because I don't, you only take my word. They're saying that they're within limits. I'm saying it's loud. And I don't know maybe which nights they pull the permit and which nights they don't. Because like they said, when you get, when you get to 80, 90 decibels, it's loud. But, I mean, is there possible to do a three-month review and let you see how this goes, but not, not approve this as a final approval? And I also like to see that they would actually try to shut down because even the abstract says it's five to nine, so I think nine o'clock is a good time to start shutting down. And I think that's what they would agree, but I certainly, as a compromise, maybe three months and then a review. Did you follow that, Steve? I just realized I was talking in the wrong end of the phone.
No, 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 I, I think we got it. So you're suggesting that perhaps we would amend the SRU to be temporary or a continuation of the temporary? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, well, I guess that would be, they're already working under COVID. So yes, just continue under COVID and review it in three months. And give everybody a chance to actually see just how much of an impact it is on the neighborhood.
But even if it's passed, doesn't that, and, and we get complaints or it's not working properly? Isn't, I mean, the SRU could still be revoked, is that correct?
In town code language, there is a kind of a diligence that, that if there were complaints, town staff would work with the applicant. So I think, I mean, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, there would, that would be the first start is to address any complaints and work through the SRU guidelines rather than the first complaint. It's not going to come straight back to the planning commission.
Right, no, I understand that. I was just, I mean, that's a safeguard that's built in for this sort of problem, correct?
I, well, yes. And I want to clarify too, I guess, under the temporary, while their temporary expires June 12th, they are issued on a 120-day basis. And so we would be at a place under the temporary license to issue them through October. And that would be the route we would go under their temporary license because we are still under a declaration of local emergency.
Right, and, and also, of course, then hopefully we'll know what the longer-term situation is with COVID at that time. That's, that's my thinking.
I'm wondering if that would accommodate their desire to have other types of events spilling out onto the patio?
It does, because their agreement, their temporary use agreement with town is for outdoor, it covers outdoor activities and not just their music. Now, last year they only did, to my knowledge, and maybe Mandy and Kimba, correct me if I'm wrong, it was primarily music that was being done last year under temporary use. But it would allow them in the current agreement to do weddings or other activities.
Okay.
So this is, I, I wonder, Mandy, are, are you guys willing at all to consider that as an option of just continuing on the temporary license under the emergency use through October and then coming before us again with this packet? So that, you know, we could see what the impact is all through the summer?
We felt like that's what happened last summer is that we operated and it was kind of a test to see how we were. I mean, yes, I, we are hearing Roger's complaint and he did come to the venue last summer and talk to us. But as far as we're concerned, there was no other complaints or issues with the sound. And so we are trying to make decisions around whether we rent equipment for operating outside again or whether we purchase it. And we would prefer to purchase it because it would be more viable. But without a permanent solution, that's kind of a silly waste of money. And so I don't know if how much things would change over the next summer from, from last summer, I guess, is where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
This is Linda. So last summer, this is just a question for Kimba and Mandy.
Last summer, were there events like weddings and, and memorials? Or was it just music events?
Unfortunately, due to COVID, we didn't have any other events. Although we did have one memorial that was, you know, like a smaller, reduced capacity type of event. But because of COVID, we weren't, you know, nobody was having events last summer.
So you really can't compare last summer to what would be going on this coming summer with different events? Or would the COVID restriction, restrictions still apply?
So there is a change as it goes to level blue and then level clear where there is, from a capacity standpoint, there is ability to do, again, so limited capacity indoors, larger events outdoors. You know, last year, I don't know what level we were under last year. It changed a lot as we went through summer. But there was a time last year that we were operating in blue, which is where we are now. And a lot of the events that Caribou Room had were at some of those less strict levels. So I don't believe we moved to red until kind of the fall time.
I agree with that, Miranda, but, you know, there is a little bit of confusion about the blue level for us. I mean, are we indoor unseated event space? Are we a bar? Are we a restaurant? You know, our regular capacity is somewhere around 550 people. And that's definitely not in the recommendations right now. You know, we have a baseline of what we think is financially viable indoors. And I don't think that any of the capacity levels that we might fall in at blue even helps us at this point. And we've been trying to pay close attention to it. There is, like I said, a little bit of confusion about what category we would fall into. But we're still not where we possibly could be. And, you know, I don't think anybody wants to be indoors with 500 people right now, even once COVID is a little bit more managed and under control.
And to that point, I actually just pulled up in the standard. So just for the planning commission to, to know, I know there is some confusion given the nature of the business, but depending on whether they were outdoors, you know, seated or indoor seated, they're still limited at the highest level to 250 people, which again is half the capacity. So unlike restaurants that have been able to open up almost to 100%, there will be still those restrictions on the Caribou Room's business type.
And I think that it's important to note that the lower capacity outdoors, it's actually helped us manage the cost of running an event, which made it more viable. I mean, people are coming after and spending money on food because they were just like, you know, excited to have something different. And so it's, it's really been nicer to have the reduced capacity outside. But knowing that inside, it takes a lot more staff and it takes a lot more effort to get shows to run indoors. So it's, it just costs us more money to operate indoors at this point. So the reduced capacity of even 250 is, is hard for us to sort of stop of.
Can I, this is Roger again. Can I ask another question? We were kind of just going down this long, long discussion. But do you, do you anticipate pulling noise permits again this year?
Yeah, of course, if we, if we need to, we will. I mean, you know, we, like Miranda said, we pulled, we pulled like 15 and I don't think we needed that many. But we tried to do that in good faith, trying to get more notice out there that we were holding these events. So I mean, it was public notice to the neighbors. And like we said, we didn't notice that there was many other complaints, so.
Oh, we, yes, we didn't complain because we were told it was a temporary thing to be good citizens. So I, I feel real horrible that, you know, I didn't, you know, I certainly would have followed up more, but it was explained that just, just put up with it this, you know, this summer, be a good citizen and then it will, then everything will be fine. But, but my question about the permits and that, that explains why, you know, I really felt like it is loud because it is loud. If you've actually, you know, went over the, you know, the 73 is supposed to be a hair dryer loudness. And, okay, well, that explains it. And so that's why there's, there's just a pretty big conflict. And it's every, every Friday, Saturday night, you know, crash, boom, bang. So that's actually, that's, it's just a tough one. And that's a little different from the hearing we just had where they're putting in six tables. They want to sit around and drink some, some whiskey and beer, or I guess a beer, you know? So it's, this question is totally different. So that, that's why it's actually so hard to find the middle ground.
This is Billy.
Yeah, go ahead, Billy.
I just wanted to say, I think Linda, Jim kind of alluded to, you know, last summer, you know, obviously it was extreme and just being able to do any business was good, that people were able to. But I wonder if this summer would be a better, like, test run for something like this to, you know, if this was kept just temporary, you know, to see how it really would go with the likeliness of, you know, COVID restrictions loosening. Like there's a green building, that's the world I'm in, Green Building Conference of downtown Denver that just announced today. It's in September, but they'll be at 100% capacity, which is like four times what they were gonna be. So it, it seems at least that there's, you know, at Denver, they're projecting to, to, you know, change their capacity. And so I wonder what will happen with the state. But I just wonder if this summer would be a real better, you know, a better real test run than last summer when it may have been just too restricted to know how it would really look for the long term.
Well, I think that's a good point. But really the question, I think Mandy alluded to the fact that she, you know, they're not, they would rather not do a temporary because of the renting equipment versus buying it. But I throw it back to Mandy. Would, would that, would you consider doing another temporary through October?
We really would rather prefer not to. I mean, I, I understand what you are saying and that it would be another test run. We feel, we really do feel like last summer speaks for itself regardless of COVID. So I, I think that's all I can say right now at this time.
This is Stephanie.
Well, except.
Oh, go ahead, Roger, go ahead, Steve.
No, I was just gonna say, except that it's not really a true test because you couldn't do all of the other type of events that you wanted to do that you might be able to do this summer.
Well, at this point, we're probably too far. I mean, you know, the capacity restrictions have only recently changed. I mean, we're still under the review process for blue. We're not gonna exit that until mid-May. And maybe we go to all clear at that point. But, you know, people aren't planning weddings at this point. They're still trying to see what's gonna happen. So I still think last summer is pretty standard for what we can expect. You know, weddings and other events are probably a lot less noise. You know, it's, it's not, you know, unless they have a band outside, it won't be the same type of event. So it really won't change the character of our summer. You know, as much as, it won't change the character from what it was last summer. I mean, if anything, it would mean that maybe we had a wedding on a Thursday night and you, you know, probably wouldn't even notice. So, you know, we would prefer not to go into a temporary, although we recognize that the town is generous in granting us the temporary use permits we have had. And if necessary, we will go forward under temporary. But like I said, we would prefer not to.
Okay, well.
Stephanie was trying to say something. I was just wondering if maybe Stephanie could finish. She started to speak at the same time Steve did. Is it possible? Yeah, is it possible to let Stephanie talk too?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks. I was just gonna say that I know that from, I think for, you know, it is true. I mean, this noise definitely carries across town, over into Big Springs. And I think that, but at the same time, we want to be able to, you know, give them some level of certainty. So Roger, I would think that the three month would be, given that we're currently in April, is sort of in the middle of the summer, in the middle of their season. And so I think it's a little too soon because then it's difficult for them to, you know, have some certainty throughout the whole summer season. It sounded like that this is something, that their season kind of extends into the September, potentially even October timeframe. And I would be very willing to, you know, extend this permit through that, that full range of their, of their summer season so that they can at least have, you know, certainty between now and the next, I almost said next snowfall, but that could be in a couple of weeks. So maybe this is the first snowfall at the end of the summer, when we know people start coming back inside. So I would, I guess I would modify Roger's suggestion a little bit and say, let's give them enough certainty to go through the whole summer. But I do support that this is an extension of the existing restrictions under COVID versus a kind of blanket in perpetuity way to operate going forward. Because I do think that there are, I think that some of the polling of residents limiting that to the immediate residents in the area is quite limited given that the sound does carry far beyond that 300 feet perimeter. And that to get a more accurate assessment of the impact on residents, it would be more helpful to talk to folks on, in various parts of town where the noise does carry. I think that much like it was mentioned earlier, you know, having that conversation with, with, with residents and recording that in some way that's somewhat systematic would help us in making a decision in the fall as to whether to continue a permit in this, this market or not.
Yeah, thanks Stephanie, we were talking about the temporary through October.
Yeah, and I would support that.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
Oh, I think Stephanie's proposal is a good one if it's acceptable for the Caribou Room.
We will probably try to gather the letters that we need for support and still go before the BOT for a permanent solution.
Hey Steve, this is Jim Reese. I just wanted to get some clarification from Miranda. We don't have any say so in that extension of the temporary permit. That is all under emergency town regulations right now because of COVID, is that correct? So you guys would be the ones to decide?
The Board of Trustees gave me authority in my role to extend that. So I would do that administratively.
So no matter what happens tonight, whether or not it's approved or not, you still have that ability under those COVID regulations to extend that through October?
Correct.
But it sounds like that the Caribou Room is not interested in doing that, that they want to, they don't want to amend the, or extend the temporary, is that correct?
To my understanding, the Caribou Room would be seeking the planning commission, commission to vote on this tonight as it's presented. Obviously to discuss additional, they are looking for a vote.
Yes, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, well, let's, I think we're at the point where we can probably do a vote on the SRU as proposed?
Hey Steve, this is Jim again. Just, I hate to beat this dead heller, but again, I wanted to just double check there. So even if we, as a planning commission, do not allow, vote to not approve this, Miranda, you still have the ability to approve the temporary permit on through October, no matter what we decide tonight, is that correct?
That is correct, that, that they, we could extend the temporary. Now, there are components in that agreement that if there were complaints, that that license could be revoked. They would go before the Board of Trustees for that. But I do have that authority to continue their extension.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that the, the planning commission knew that even if we decided against this, because what we're voting on tonight, as I understand, it would be an ongoing license to have that, that they would still have the ability to operate this summer if Miranda approved that extension for another 120 days. That's all I had to add to that, thank you.
Well, that, that's correct. And of course, even if we vote against it, they can still go to the Board of Trustees, just like Ron Mitchell did with the parking.
And, and they just stated that they were going to go to the Board of Trustees.
Right. So, so my point is, I think we've, we've exhausted compromise. So I think we're ready to do a vote.
And my opening comments, Steve, I'll just say a final thing. Everything they've said, my opening comments are the exact same thing because they're gonna pull, they want to go polls noise variances and, and continue on, on their business plan, their new business plan. And so the point is that, you know, you're gonna have two nights a week, 200 people down there and, and a band, whether it's pulled a noise permit or not, one way or the other, two nights a week, there's gonna be an awful lot of commotion right there in that neighborhood. So that's it. And I, I didn't see any willingness to discuss or compromise. And then we're right back to square one. They want to go with this new business plan.
Yeah, that, that's my point. Billy, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, like initially, I felt like this was gonna be something of a, you know, slam dunk, straightforward decision. And then Roger brought up something and, you know, it starts to rub up against criteria for approval. Yeah, it just makes it muddy. And so, you know, obviously you guys as the applicants get to make a decision and bring it to the BOT, no matter what we vote out. But I'd say this went from clear to muddy. And so I wonder if what we're offering is some kind of, you know, bridge, just something to think about. I mean, at least for sake of the planning commission, being more on board.
Could you clarify your comment about offering a bridge? I don't quite get that.
The extension, you know, the, having another summer kind of trial period, you know, through, I guess through October, we were talking, maybe if we did the extra 120 days. Yeah, it just went for me from being a kind of a clear thing to kind of a cloudy thing. And I feel like, you know, maybe even though it's an extra expense, like, at least from the planning commission point of view, obviously it doesn't, the buck doesn't stop here. But it, it makes it harder for us just to approve it, let's put it that way.
I mean, I think that it was important what Miranda had said about that she could, she could give us the temporary through October on her authority. And so that's why we're coming before the planning commission is for a decision for permanent use. Otherwise, we would just have, you know, we will take Miranda up on that offer of the temporary if we have to. But, you know, the reason why we came before the planning commission was because this was a, a permanent change, not a temporary change.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm seeing or thinking and, you know, Jennifer, correct me if I'm going somewhere I shouldn't go, but like, you, you may be painting yourselves into a corner, you know, on this temporary decision or on this permanent, that's what I'm saying.
Understandable, thank you.
So, so the, for this agreement, there's criteria and conditions in section 1655, the paragraph A statement three, that talks about minimizing adverse impact on, on adjacent properties or something, some wording to that effect. And I think we need to see in documentation, support from the neighborhood for the outdoor music in order to make this permanent. And that, that's just my opinion.
We can work on that. And I suppose we can reschedule this permanent decision to next month's planning commission meeting. And we'll, we'll make all the effort to go talk to our neighbors and get those letters of support out. We definitely realized we were at a disadvantage when we saw the Nada Root, the seven letters. letters of support. So, yeah, of course, we can go and get those support letters.
Yeah, they had like a five-page petition or cert, yeah, petition signatures as well. So, yeah, okay, great.
And sorry, this is Billy, and thanks, Karen. That was kind of this one, I'm, I wasn't able to look at those. But, yeah, it just went from being something that cleanly passed criteria for approval, which is really all we could make decisions on, to dit, to, to not passing that criteria for approval, which is the same criteria the Board of Trustees has to look at. And so, that, that's a big, that, that, you know, impact on the adjacent properties or neighbors is, is a big one.
And if, if the planning commission votes against this, and, you know, the majority votes against it, bringing it to the Board of Trustees will, that wouldn't be that favorable, I don't, don't believe.
That, that's right. And, and so, if Caribou is agreeable to continue this for another month to get, gather this additional information, would you be, you'd be agreeable to that?
Yes, we would, thank you.
Okay. Well, can we have a motion out there to, to continue till the May meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Can I, to you, Karen?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So, it needs to be to, you need to specify specifically what date that is. That looks like it is, the, the motion needs to specify that it's May 26th, 2021.
So I move to extend the application to May?
Continue, continue the public hearing.
To May 16th?
26.
Sorry. Okay, I'm, continue the hearing to May 26th.
This is Jim Reese, my second.
Okay, Cynthia?
Okay, so we're gonna go backwards, Vice Chair Reese?
Yep.
Commissioner Parry? Commissioner Parry, motion to continue to May 26th?
Is he there?
We may have lost him. Let me try to, I can, well, I actually can't, if I hang up, I hang up on everyone.
I'll keep, I'll keep cruising down. Commissioner Herron?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
And Chair Williams?
Uh, yes.
And then we'll circle back, is Commissioner Parry available? Okay, so motion passes to continue to May 26th, and they would come back on May 26th and, and speak again about this and.
Thank you very much for your consideration. We appreciate your time and effort on this matter.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. As I said, we're trying to reach some middle ground and appreciate your willingness and patience. And Miranda, they, are they all set there as far as their current temporary? Or do we have to, I think it was June, I think I read.
They're good through June 12th.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything if it comes before the next meeting, correct?
Correct, they'll still operate on their temporary. Now, I just want to clarify though, that, then if they have events that they want to hold between now and May 26th, they are permitted to do so under temporary.
Yes.
And we'd like to invite the entire board to our first show, which is May 21st. It's actually a Beatles cover band. The May 22nd show is gonna be a local band, the No Go Liabilles, which is more of a bluegrass band, but there's some local members, including Adam Paz runs Netherlands Feed and Pet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll do a, a short break to, till we get to the Envision, which is our next item on the agenda. So, can we return back at 9:45? Will that work for everyone?
Sure, 10-minute break starting at 9:35. Thanks for that, Chair Williams.
Well, yes. Okay, we'll see everyone back, thank you.
Miranda, you there?
I'm here.
So, how do you want to do this? Do you want to go through each of the different sections and then ask for input on that section? Or just go through the whole document and then just have people come back with comments as a whole?
Yeah, we actually, you know, the hope is that the commissioners in advance reviewed this document, so we didn't need to take a significant amount of time to go over it in its entirety. I will, I know, so two of your commissioners are on the Envision 2030 Committee, two have already attended charrettes. And so I guess my thought is to just open it up to the planning commission as a whole, just to see after reviewing the document, do you have any feedback on, any feedback on any one of the, the subcommittees under the goals and objectives identified?
Okay, yeah, I was sort of thinking that, just to save time, but I didn't know whether you were looking for specific feedback for each of the committees or, or just as a whole?
Yeah, just as a whole, really open feedback. And I will say, if any commissioner did not have a chance to review this, we still want your feedback. The kind of caveat to that, though, is that we're, we're closing the feedback loop on Friday, because we need to move forward with putting this before the Board of Trustees. So if you don't feel like you can provide input tonight, please visit our website and go in and submit your comments. But we would love to hear whatever people have to say tonight.
Yeah, no, and, and that's why I think you adequately reminded everyone to, you know, review this and come back with comments tonight. So, certainly make sure you, you know, ask for that again.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, what you have before you is the vision statement, goals and objectives document. We also have a YouTube video where the same information is narrated. Again, Commissioner Blakemore and Commissioner Giblin are on the committee and happy to turn it over to them too, if they want to kind of share any thoughts before we maybe open it up to any commissioner who is ready to share feedback. Karen, Billy, do you have anything you want to add?
Okay, go ahead.
We've, well, we've, we've been working on this for two-plus months, and we've spent a lot of time doing research and, and trying to put in kind of the best practices in the environmental sustainability and parks, recreation, open space. And we've been incorporating, you know, we've worked really closely with Parks Rep and with ProSAB, both ProSAB and SAB. So, and we used like the ProSAB strategic plan as the basis for the, the parks part of it. And the SAB doesn't have an equivalent plan, but we were able to look at what other municipalities are doing and what the United Nations is doing as far as environmental sustainability. So, Billy, do you want to add anything in there?
Well, we can probably get started here and then go over this. Cynthia, do you want to, let's, let's call the meeting back to order?
Meeting called back here at 9:48 PM.
Okay, so now we're moving into discussion items. And the first, I guess the only discussion item that's up is for the Envision 2030 Vision Statement Goals and Objectives document that they've been working on. So Miranda, if you would be so kind as to present this?
I think I did it prematurely, because I'm not sure I have much more to add, but I'll just recap this. So as, as Karen had discussed, the Envision 2030 Advisory Committee has been working on this since January, majority of the work being done the last three months. So what is before you are seven subcommittees. The subcommittees were determined based on that slot analysis that you all did last year, as well as some of the feedback received from the community. Seven themes emerged, which we, the subcommittees around. And those subcommittees were then tasked with developing vision statements, goals and objectives. So what you have before you tonight is each subcommittee's recommendations on what those should be as we head into the next 10 years. And we're really just looking to get your feedback and comments on any of those goals, whether you feel in support of them or you feel that they need to change. We'd just love to hear whatever it is you have to say about this document and any section within it.
So I'm, I'm thinking we should go section by section. So I have a comment on education, but there may be others before education.
So I can, I guess my, my thought, and I don't, maybe Steve, correct me if you're wrong, I didn't think, to read the whole thing, it would take about an hour. And so, I, I think what's most appropriate, and I'm happy to do what Karen's suggesting, is just bring up each one and, and kind of with the hope that you've read this, and you can just comment on each of the, the items.
Okay.
So if we start with arts, culture and education, Karen, sounds like you have feedback on education, and I'm ready for it.
That came up fast. I was thinking it, okay. What I have is that, um, oops, oh, okay. So I think we should incorporate a vision statement about education from the 2020 vision. So, and that statement's all about how we need high quality and well-attended local schools in order, you know, because they're really important for the sustainability of our community. And I don't see that in the education goal and objectives. So, and the, the, it, it's the second education vision statement from 2020. And it says, "In 2020, every student in Netherlands schools is afforded the opportunity to succeed regardless of ability. Netherlands education system is strong, has high levels of parental involvement and higher than average youth retention rates." And I don't see a focus, anything in our, the 2030 education section that talks about the importance of our schools and how every student needs to be given an opportunity to succeed. And the, the education, we're, we're looking for a strong education system with lots of parental environment. And we're going to measure the success of the school by the youth retention rates. So I, I hear a lot about how we're losing students in the Netherlands schools. And so, you know, in order to sustain those schools and sustain our, our community, I think we should have a, a statement about the, the local schools. So basically, to make a long story short, if somehow we could incorporate that second education vision statement from 2020 into the 2030.
Perfect, thanks Karen.
Thank you.
Is there other feedback regarding Arts, Culture and Education?
Yeah, I have a comment on the education. This is Linda. And I've worked closely with both the elementary and the high schools. And I know the seniors gave the sign for the Netherlands Panthers to the town. So it was on display. And I feel it was just kind of pushed to the side because it was set up by porta potties, basically. And I think it's kind of a slap in the face to the high school because they made a huge effort to have this incorporated into the town. So I think we need as a town to acknowledge the high school and middle level a little more to try to bring them into in a respectful way that they are part of the town. Because the kids are part of the town. So I think that could be an improvement that we do to just bring them closer to the town. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, great thing.
You need to incorporate the teen center with that too.
Right, I agree. I mean, because they're just kind of all separated. And it's a very important thing because it's so important for the, the students at the high school, the middle level elementary to be recognized by the town a little bit more. And in a little more respectful way. So I think that the sign in the middle of the town that the seniors donated should be somehow presented a little bit better.
Plus, at the last Board of Trustees meeting, when Envision was presented, there was also a proposal to have a youth committee, if you will, to get more involved in the town. And I think that's actually in here, is that correct?
It's not quite, it did come up in a few of these outreach sessions. It's called Yoab, the Youth Opportunity Advisory Board. And so there has been recommendations to incorporate that into this document.
Okay, yeah, because that, that I thought was a good suggestion as well. So I just want to make sure that that made it in.
There is a comment about creating opportunities. But there's a desire to make that very specific note that there should be an advisory board that, so youth can weigh in on what's happening in town.
So this is Jim Reese. I wanted to just say under culture, I, I noticed that you had a bullet under there, if I can find it again, where we would do some outreach to the P K P communities, including them retelling history. For instance, the P K P Historical Trail, et cetera there. And I wonder if, if, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about how that could be implemented. But I've always appreciated that little sign that talks about some of Netherlands history that's up right next to Cynthia's office. And I wonder, and I've seen that in some other states where they do, you know, or even in our state, you know, at, at different sites where they have interpretive sites. And they'll have information listed about the history of the town, or the history of that spot. And how if you go out like towards the Muffet Tunnel, they've got an interpretive site there. And it, and it shows, you know, some dates and talks about information about the first miners up there. So I wonder if that would be something that might be a lower cost option to preserve some of the, the history and culture of the mining community that Netherlands came about from. You know, to maybe add a handful of sites around Netherlands, maybe in Tupita Park, Barkham Meadows Park, different places where we could put some of those signings up that would be, you know, descriptive and tell a little bit of the history of our information for the tourists that travel through.
Okay.
That's my comment.
Thanks. Any other recommendations on Arts, Culture, Education?
Yes, I don't know if it belonged under education, but the only comment, I'm sort of, as Linda made the comment about sort of the older, older goods, I would just note that, you know, with, in terms of childcare for, prior to even entering school. You know, Netherlands has, prior to the pandemic, we had, you know, several kind of home care providers. But now, as of today, I mean, I think that the only, the earliest childcare available is through New Explorer, starting at two and a half. In terms of something that's, you know, formal beyond that, it's sort of private nanny systems. And so I do think, I mean, I wonder if that's in, figuring out what, if there is a way to, as a community, promote that, whether that, you know, be in-home daycare or things like that. But there does need to be more formal infrastructure in our town to promote people keeping their kids up here at an early age. Because once you start in a daycare down in Boulder or somewhere else, then inevitably, you know, your kids make friends there and then they stay. And then they go to kindergarten and elementary and then they're not going to school up here. And so I do think that's part of the, the broader education conversation within the community and keeping kids in school up here is to ensure that parents of infants and younger children have more daycare options. So that they're encouraged to, you know, keep their, keep their kids up here and build their communities, their children's communities up here as well. So I think it's one of the challenges that our community faces today. And it would be nice to see that transit, it got worse during the pandemic, for sure. It wasn't as bad, you know, 18 months ago. But as of today, it is, it's a pretty, it's a pretty grim situation for kids, for people, people who have young, young children.
Absolutely. And at their Arts, Culture and Education Public Outreach Session that was specific to their goals, that actually came up quite a bit. And so I do believe that their intention is to incorporate childcare into the educational goals. And then we'll talk with them about also the high school, middle school and adding that in. As well as Karen's recommendation about Envision 20, the 2020 Statement. I'll move on unless anyone has anything else.
No, I feel like that's, that, I think that was a good point that was made about how the strong education system up here in Netherlands needs to start at the preschool level in order to keep kids up in the, in the school system up here. So, yeah, I think that was a good point.
Yeah, absolutely. So the next topic is community engagement. And I will say too, if anyone's very passionate about this, their public outreach session specific to this goal is tomorrow at six o'clock. But is there any feedback about what they have outlined in their goals, objectives and visions?
This is Jim Reese. My feedback is that it seems like you're doing these goals already. And from what I've seen, the town has done a good job of trying to, either through social media outreach or, you know, I know when we do, you know, a new project and a building opens up, like the wastewater treatment plant or the new town shop, they were doing open houses for the public to come in and, and ask questions and get information about, you know, how we're trying to meet, you know, renewable energy goals and things like that. So I actually think the town's doing a good job on these already. That's nicely done.
You know, what, what I find, Jim, is that there's a lot of people who don't know what's going on in town. Because they're, you know, they're, they're not watching the town website or they're not hooked into the social media, the Facebook groups. So, um, I, I don't know how, how to actually, you know, get, get the word out to more people. But I think it's something that, that could be improved on somehow.
Well, and of course, we have, you know, the newspaper does a pretty good job too of telling people what's going on. I personally always go to the town website because they do a nice job of putting together, you know, all of the latest stories and, and updates and so forth. Well, by the way, speaking of updates, I got a text that Boulder Canyon is now open.
Oh, good, that's great.
Okay, but, but, but I'm, I'm sort of with Jim. I'm thinking that, you know, I don't know how much more we can do, but communication is the key. But how do you reach out to people who don't routinely go to the website or email or social media and so forth, or read the newspaper? I'm just, I, I'm sort of lost for some additional ideas.
Uh, this is Linda again. And just having worked with the elementary school, a lot of the parents that I spoke with would be more involved with the town, but they don't get the information. And I think if we work with the school somehow, even in their newsletter, if we had a little blurb, just giving some kind of update as to what the town is doing. I mean, that's one way to reach out to people.
That's a great suggestion.
That was one of their main complaints on not knowing any of the details about what the town board was doing. Or, I mean, a lot of it is they were just being lazy, not looking up things. But if they get something that actually goes home with the kids, they may read it.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Good point. Linda, do you remember, we used to post information at the post office a lot? Because everyone goes to the post office at some point. And, um,
You can post the town minutes.
I'm sorry?
You can, you can only post certain things and Town Minutes and different documents can be posted there. But they do have a billboard that is just for town youth.
Right, so I wonder if we can suggest reinvigorating that process or something?
I know Wild Bear had postings on a bulletin board down there as well.
Right.
I, I think if we, if we made the agendas public, some, or I know they're public. But if we publicized those, I guess at the post office would be one way to do it.
We do do that now, Commissioner Blake Moore? At the, at the town hall and at the post office. So that's a, that's, those, those agendas are up regularly up there. And that is, that's been going on for years, actually.
And it's amazing how many people actually stand there and read it.
They do read it?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
There's a, there's a counter right there. So it's, it's a good location as people are checking their mail and they can, they can use that counter and the bulletin board, it's a glassed-in locking bulletin board that the town is able to use. And we post there regularly all the meetings and the agendas.
One thing this committee is, you know, and it doesn't necessarily work for everyone, but taking into consideration is the use of QR codes. You know, it's a, it's this scannable code that's on the, the front of this. And that, that could be an option too, that if you're standing at the post office, you could scan the QR code and it would take you straight to the town hall website. So we're trying to integrate that in any of the flyers we develop. You know, we made one for town cleanup. And so, you know, that's kind of meets people in the tech age, that's going with cell phones. There, there is lots of room for improvement. You know, we provided nine different ways to give feedback for Envision. But that's still not enough, you know, we have to, I don't think this will ever be a complete conversation. We just always have to be thinking of how can we integrate people more into what's happening? Not only with town government, but the community as a whole.
I agree with that.
Yeah, you know, and people I've talked to, they're, they're pretty adamant too that this is a two-way street. I mean, you can reach out like we do in many ways. But, but people have to show an interest to reach back as well. So, you know, I, I sort of have to agree with Jim. I think we're, we're doing a pretty good job with, you know, community outreach. But it's a two-way street. Anyway, just a side comment.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I'm going to keep moving, if I have anything else. So Karen, since this is your committee, I think I would love to turn it over to you for this one in Parks, if that's okay?
Uh, sure.
Which is a much better, which
The next one is Environmental Sustainability.
Yeah, so, um, there's a lot of different aspects to sustainability. You know, if you, we look at the comprehensive plan, there's a discussion of sustaining the environment, sustaining the economy, sustaining, sustaining our social systems. And they're all interconnected. But here, we're just focusing on the environment. And so the vision statement that says we want to be a model community. And we think this is achievable because we feel this community is very passionate about nature and the environment they live in. And we're small enough that maybe we can get things done that larger municipalities cannot. We have a statement about being educated on the environment. And the, and there's actually an education objective under each goal. That's due to Jill Reeves being on our committee from Wild Bear. The second statement under that model community is that we, has to do with the climate change. And taking action to mitigate. And I've actually changed that a little bit so that it's not just taking action to mitigate adverse effects, but also taking action to change the direction of, of the climate. And then the last one is kind of an overarching statement that says we're dedicated to conserve, preserve, protect and restore our environment to foster a sustainable future for our children and their children. And, and that leads to social and economic improvements in our community. And then we identified several different themes and put together a, a goal for each one and then objectives underneath that. and put together a, a goal for each one and then objectives underneath that. So, if you, uh, have any comments, um, we can hear those now. Or if you think of something later, you can also submit a comment later.
I have a comment, this is Linda, on the ecological health goal.
Mm-hmm.
And just, um, just walking through town, and this has been for years, there's so much plastic waste and it's all heading down towards the reservoir. Is there anything we as a town or as a committee or something can do to just pick up the plastic, the trash, that's just laying around everywhere in the town? I mean, if you walk from the community center down to the reservoir, you could have 10 bags of just plastic. And it's definitely affecting wildlife. It's deck, you know, the water. It's just to the point where it's almost too much to see. I mean, I take a bag and I pick up trash constantly. So, I think that needs to be part of our, you know, our ecosystem, the health goal in, in improving the town. Cause it does affect a lot more than we're, we're acknowledging here.
Yep, so, uh, like an ongoing, um, town cleanup?
Yeah, I mean, we have the town cleanup, but it doesn't clean up the town. It cleans up people's yards. The town itself needs, there's so much plastic just floating around and it's heading right down to the water. So, it's definitely affecting our, uh, our, you know, the wildlife, everything. It's affecting it big time.
Wild Bear is, is doing a cleanup day, um, where they'll, uh, clean up specific areas in town, around the town cleanup daytime. And I wonder where all that plastic is coming from. I hear that it's flowing down from Big.
A lot of it is where RTD has stopped. Everyone just throws their plastic bottles. It's along, I mean, it's some, some construction stuff. It's plastic bottles, it's plastic jugs, it's vinyl material. There's a lot. I mean, just, just walk, walk down on the road and you'll see a lot that needs to be picked up.
So, this would be like an adopt a town or like adopt a highway where people pick up trash all the time, right?
Right. And, you know, we have the dumpsters down at the lake that would take it or you can recycle it because of so much of it is plastic.
Yeah, when I walk on the trail, um, I pick up a lot of trash and I just put it in the dumpsters when I get finished with the, with the hike.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like, Linda, this is Jim Reese, that you're, you're advocating for maybe a more formalized community cleanup, uh, you know, where we get out and actually maybe a couple of times a summer a, as volunteers and walk with trash bags, you know, starting from maybe, you know, the, uh, west end of town all the way down to the reservoir. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes. We need, we need to organize something somehow to just, um, somehow help the town with, with this problem.
Did, did someone mention, um, adopt a road or adopt a trail? Or, you know, maybe we could have something like that where we have certain, um, organizations or businesses um, that are responsible for certain areas of town.
Yeah, that, that was, that was, this is Steve. That was my suggestion.
That was your, okay. I'm also on the, um, zero waste group team. And so, we're, next time we meet, I'll, I'll, I'll bring up that idea. Maybe I'll shoot them an email with it.
That sounds great. I, I just think we need to be a little more proactive on this. So, I appreciate the input.
Thank you.
Kind of an idea on that, it just hit me. Um, and it may not be as practical, given the size of our town. But in, in, um, I grew up in Binghamton, New York and, uh, for whatever reasons, it was a blue collar town and, and, um, some of the people had the businesses built a bunch of carousels and it was part of the park system. Where I grew up, yeah, you just had to have a piece of trash as your admission to get on the carousel. Um, that's, you know, there was no money, but you always had to have, you had to have, had to have a piece of trash or you couldn't get on. So, I, I know we only have one carousel and they need money to function, but I wonder if there'd be some way to incorporate some kind of like, you know, piece of trash for entry to things. Or I don't know, but it, 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 it actually was fairly effective.
I hope that idea. A playful idea. Kids would enjoy that, for sure.
And I wouldn't mind saving three bucks to carousel.
Inflation, it was a dollar recently.
Oh, I know. Then two, then three. Yeah. They do, they do. Yeah, that's not the place. Yeah.
Well, it.
No, I know. They, in, in that particular place may not be the, it, it may, it may not be a great suggestion for that particular thing, but maybe there's something else that ties into the town more.
Well, it could be, it could be a grant that's funded so that the carousel could be reimbursed for trash.
Now, then where are they gonna put it? They don't have space anyway.
Okay, never mind.
Just an idea.
Well, we had Chris Bray here. What we had growing up was the pitch in campaign. I don't know if you guys remember that at all. He might not be as old as us. But back in the early seventies, there was a whole campaign which was pitch in, which got entire communities to pitch into the town on all levels. Not only recycling and things like that, but on trail maintenance and on everything like that. But the town got engaged that way by being instructed that it's your town, pitch in to make it work.
Well, that's similar to what we do now, like with the noxious weeds, you know, where a bunch of people, volunteers show up and they go and work on a particular problem.
Mm-hmm.
Are you getting, are you jotting down notes for this, Miranda?
Yep.
Okay, great.
So, if there's nothing else, that the next, is there anything else, environmental sustainability before I move on? All right. The next one is health, human and social services. And in this, they broke it into two areas, healthcare and human services. Now, I want to clarify that there was some confusion of why housing wasn't involved in this subcommittee. It is its own subcommittee. So, any feedback on health, human and social services? Okay, I'll move on. The next one is housing. Ready. Whoever, whoever was ready.
We don't have enough of it.
Uh, this is Roger. Uh, my comments are kind of scattered, so, must be late at night. I, I know when we talked about low-income seniors, vulnerable people. I mean, I, I know that, uh, this is just maybe being nitpicking, but, you know, so, you know, in the past, I think we had brought up the idea that why do we keep pointing out these individual groups? It should be just the people of need. And I, I can understand why, uh, you know, you want to point out the different areas, but in some ways it's, it just should be the, you know, based upon need. Whether you're young or old or vulnerable or low income. Not designate the individual groups.
Well, Roger, that's what the vision statement says. So, you'd start very general. So, the vision statement is that. It says housing meets the social, economical and environmental needs of the community. And then when you get into the goals, that's where you start to get a little bit more specific.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I jumped into goals. My problem is too that I'm, I'm not, you know, what, you know, what you sent us on the click on, it's actually I'm doing that, you know, the motion as it goes across the reading. So, it's hard to scroll down to, across to the individual ones. I looked for it on the website, but I don't, do we actually have the diagram where you can just scroll up and down on it? On the website?
Yeah, I can send this directly to you. You can also swing by town hall, Roger, if you want.
Oh, okay. I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not missing it. Okay.
Yeah, no, I'll send it directly to you. But then if later you want to just come in here and verbally tell us your feedback or call, that's an option too. So, I'll, I'll make sure to get this to you.
Okay. Yeah, and you're exactly right. I do have housing slash goals. That was the one. So, I missed the beginning there.
Miranda, this is Jim Reese. I, I have some comments here. I was concerned under objectives under housing here, uh, you know, where it talks about update and adopt local building codes. It seems like this is a wish list and some of the items on here are things that are already addressed in the town code. Um, you know, it talks about clarifying and revising what constitutes a dwelling unit. Uh, I, I talked to you about this a little bit last night at the charrette. It's already very well defined, you know, under definitions in chapter 16. And when it talks in here about allowed dwellings for yurts, seasonal teepees, use of teepees, hemp crepe, straw bale, things that, uh, I, I know currently are addressed in the, in the town code. And when it talks about revisit the SRU and ADU ordinances, you know, to basically, this says make some changes. Um, I, I, I wonder if this is an appropriate objective for something that's already been addressed and looked at by the town code. Uh, I, I, I'm just throwing that out there for discussion because it seems to, I, if you brought some of these things up to me, you know, if they came before, if, if we had an SRU and they say, hey, we want to put some seasonal teepees out in our yard and charge money for it, I, I think there would be some neighbors that have a problem with it.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jim. I have, um, issues with the objectives here. I, I, uh, having update and adopt local building codes as an objective, um, doesn't seem right to me. I think really we need to look at what, what problem are we trying to solve by updating and adopting local buil- building codes? And that would be the objective. Um, it seems to me the, the thing about the dwelling unit, I believe it's very clear in the code what a dwelling unit is. Um, I, I, I'm thinking the intent here is that maybe they want to change, um, what constitutes a dwelling unit to allow for more, um, short-term rentals. Um, so that things aren't considered as ADUs if they have like, uh, a kitchenette, something to that effect. So, it's really not clear what the intent of these objectives are. What, what is the, um, outcome that they're looking for? What problem are they trying to solve? Those would be the objectives. And then as far as, um, if we need to change the building codes, that would be, um, in the implementation and not, not the objective or the goal. Um, so, it would be more, um, in the action, um, part. As, and, um, maybe there's ways to address, um, the problem they're trying to solve or the outcome they're trying to reach, uh, without changing building codes. Um, so here, it looks like the objectives are actually presenting solutions, um, rather than, um, desired outcomes.
This is Jim again. I, I agree with that, with what Karen just said there. And it feels like it's, it's an opportunity for the small subgroup to put in changes that they'd like to see based on, you know, their, their, you know, goals, which may be all well and good, you know, to increase housing. But I know that the planning commission and the BOT worked real hard on that ADU SRU ordinances. And it feels like it's just an opportunity, they're looking for another bite at the apple, to go back and say, hey, uh, Vision 2030 says, uh, X. So, I, I just wonder, my feedback is that I wonder if these are appropriate objectives in here, uh, when they fly in the face of stuff that's already been addressed. Uh, but, and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, that's right. And we spent, we spent years working on this. So, and, and the town had, um, or public had lots of time to chime in on it as well. So.
So, and I, I'm concerned that these are not like the top priorities. I think, I think our vision, goals and objectives should be addressing the most important issues. And so, the vision statement is housing meets the social, economic and environmental needs of the community. Okay, where are we lacking there? Um, and then that would be, um, we'd work down from that point. Um, you know, are we, you know, I, I know we, we need employee housing, um, affordable housing, um, housing for seniors. And so, if we look at those as, as goals and then work from there on how, how to accommodate those. Um, but changing the ADU and STR ordinances, um, I don't know that that's the right approach to, to realize the vision for housing.
Yeah, this is Roger. I agree with everything we're saying. And I, that was actually the ones that I had the most comment to about the codes and that whole area. That, uh, um, you know, these, as you guys said, these are not, sometimes they're kind of like shooting a scatter gun, just ideas, uh, like height increase came up a couple of different places. And yet, you know, I know we've been to, every time we have a hearing and, uh, and even at a previous board, and I was just, uh, very adamant about, you know, no going higher than 35 feet. So, it's, it's one of those things where, yes, something great to say. Same thing with, uh, uh, we, we actually had that come up a couple of years ago, a, a project where they wanted us to give them water and sewer, uh, you know, and not charge as much for the tax fees. But when you start to look at a project and you look at our water and sewer funds that are in pretty shaky, uh, positions and/or, uh, you know, we're paying some of the highest rates in the state. Um, it's hard, you know, easier said than done. So, sure, well, you know, you do this, we'll give you that. So, it's, it's easier said than done. And RV parking, tiny homes, that, that actually statement is wrong. The code wasn't changed. Uh, so there, there, there's a scatter gun approach there that I think that, that entire, uh, thing should be looked at. And the RV parking has been, uh, that's been an ordinance and it's been a standard that we followed for 30 years. So, it's not like, oh, this is something we just did. Same thing with tiny homes. So, that, that was my feedback on all the story changes, that it's, it's not real relevant. And I, seeing I have a floor right now, I'll just say that, uh, I do like the, I think several times where said, you know, if we do this or do that, you know, let's, let's get lots of feedback. And/or like the annexation, let's have a, uh, public vote at the, at the election time. So, I think, I think that's a positive thing when we were working on the, uh, uh, the county agreement. Uh, you know, there were a ton of people that came to those charrettes and to the hearings that we had, um, saying that, and even, even I actually came to the planning commission, didn't it, that we, we even discussed that, yeah, these things should be, the annexation should be voted on by the general public. And so, I think that actually was a positive thing. And I saw that in a couple of places where they said have the, have the entire community decide, not, not a committee or even the BOT. That was some of my feedback on that code change area.
Perfect. Thank you. Any others? Okay, the next is municipal government. Comments on there? Sample of goals and objectives here?
It, it seems like this one is getting really detailed. And, and actually some of the others, I was going to bring that up as a general comment, but it seems like there's a lot of really detail, like the town will continue to scan records. Well, the bigger picture is to make information more available. Uh, for example, through databases or through, um, you know, through the webpages and so forth. So I don't know why things get so detailed in parts of this document, but this, this is just an example of that to me.
There were some committee members who, or some subcommittees who did opt to go um, a little bit deeper. And then the goal was to really generate conversations and feedback. Those subcommittee members are aware that as we go into kind of the final version, they do need to pull back a little bit. But there are a few subcommittee members who felt like being too broad wasn't going to generate the discussion they were looking for. And so that's why you may see that in some of theirs.
Yeah, well, it's like micromanagement and, and, you know, I just, it seems to me that the, that the purpose of this document is more of a strategic document rather than a tactical one where, where you specifically point out steps uh, to, to do something as opposed to this is where we want to get to, you know what I'm saying, a strategic document.
Yeah, absolutely.
One thing we kind of realized, you know, these different subcommittees at different people. And yeah, I think it ended up being that, you know, we didn't all tackle this the same way, kind of. Not, not intentionally, it just turned out that way. And so it's almost like it needs a final, or it needs a
Right.
final edit almost by one person, or you know, at least one group that's clear on what they, how they want to write it. So that all eight or whatever of these things are written with clea, with, with kind of that same consistent degrees of, you know, goals and objectives being focused on strategy and then, you know, or, or, you know, on kind of, well, the objectives for the long term and in strategic planning and stuff being written specifically um, with more of that kind of wording. It's just because if you read through it, some of the way things are written with either more active words or, or more passive words. It's, it's kind of inconsistent as you go through the whole thing. So we still need to kind of tighten that up before the final version.
Yeah, just kind of having a final editor.
Yeah, that actually is next step. So next week, all the subcommittees will meet to integrate their feedback. And then after they're done doing that and they've really landed on the points they want to move forward with, there will be a, a plan and Karen Gary is really great at really helping to kind of pull and when words mess things together. And so the thought is that she would support us in that role of not changing content, but support in pulling the document together. So it reads in a really cohesive manner. And so that would follow not next week, but the week after. And then what would go before the board of trustees is exactly the document that Billy's referencing.
And when you find out how to leverage money at a bank for more interest, let me know.
Okay.
This is Jim Reese, I would also.
The next one down though, Net- Netherland Community Center, um, a committee, the foundation group several years ago with Dale. Um, geez, what's Dale Porter? Dale Porter, uh, we have a very, very nice uh, architectural concept of expansion and actually moving town, town offices up there. So there actually is a quite, quite a good plan on phasing and just changing the building, the actual access, parking, actually more uh, buildings up there by the uh, the shed and so on. There, there is a, there is a plan for the actual building. Don't know where it is.
I believe Dom has records of that.
Um, you know, Dale and.
Definitely, we definitely have those.
All right. Well, you know, it's something maybe should be referenced that, you know, in this thing, so it doesn't get lost. So people actually know that.
I, I do think, I do think we've referenced it.
Okay. And JCV.
Karen, the older versions. I'll tell you municipal government and economic development were really specific. One of the first couple of charrettes, um, there was a lot of concern with that. So uh, some original documents show kind of a redlined version and that's Karen where that was listed in detail. Um, the concern with these two committees is that they just got too deep into the specifics. And so this version, while not entirely kind of broad, it is still very detailed, is less so than the previous version.
Okay.
This is Jim Reese, I would also support what, what Steve had said, that going more towards the goal of transparency or whatever the larger goal might be, maximize ability to uh, you know, have profit, you know, as opposed to dictating tasks, you know, under goals and objectives, you know. These are the kind of things that usually I think would come at a later time for the town staff or, or other subcommittees to say, this is how we're going to support those goals and objectives, uh, as opposed to the groups that are just literally dictating what you're going to do. Uh, you know, by task.
And I, I agree with both of them on that, that the um, particular solutions are part of the implementation plan, part of the action plan. And so it's best to have the goals and the objectives be a statement of your desired outcomes or kind of problem statements.
Okay, thanks. The next one is economic development. Anything that stands out in this one for anyone?
Billie. One thing that, it um, can't remember how it's written now, but the one thing uh, that stood out to me when it first was proposed was like in the CBD raising building heights to fifty feet, which seemed like a pretty dramatic jump. Um, and then there was great feedback that came in and said, that said, instead of just, you know, picking a number, let's do some kind of analysis and um, you know, and uh, determine the optimum height. But, but you know, I've just been down in Boulder, Denver, Golden today and um, I think thirty-five feet is pretty dang high. Even, you know, because the, the logic was that to increase density downtown, you know, which does make sense for sake of it, in footprint impact, like to increase density in, 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 in the middle of town versus sprawling outwards. I agree with that. But even raising the whole downtown up to thirty-five feet would dramatically increase density. And I think getting loose with that thirty-five feet is a, um, not, yeah, not what I want to see happen. I think it would, you know, just, just driving to Golden just um, earlier tonight, like seeing just those few buildings that go higher than that, they really just stand out. And I can imagine living, you know, east of downtown and having all of a sudden, that's what you're looking at when going to the mountains. That, that one, I'm not a big fan of at all.
That's been pretty common feedback um, throughout the Envision process. And so I know that's been very much communicated. And I will add that the planning commission members feel the similar. Other comments?
Miranda, I have a comment on the um, second bullet, oops, on page one thirty-one, thirty-one. Um, under infrastructure, second bullet, it says, Netherland will replace and repair downtown commercial infrastructure as redevelopment takes place on adjacent properties, parcels. So I'm unclear about this. Are we saying that the town must replace, say, sidewalks if a private landowner redevelops an adjacent parcel? So I think we want a comprehensive and long-term plan for infrastructure. Um, I don't think we want to do a piecemeal.
This is Steve. I think that goes back to the comments earlier that here we're just listing tasks as opposed to the bigger picture.
Is that even a good strategy though? To say that Netherland will repair, place and repair downtown commercial infrastructure as redevelopment takes place on adjacent parcels? I don't, I just don't, I don't understand why anyone would say that. So it, it seems like we have, we're, uh, so Public Works is working on a proposal for a grant to do improvements of First Street, the whole First Street, not just in front of one building. Uh, okay. And then under culture, the first bullet. Um, I'm wondering if that town square needs to be centrally located? Or maybe um, multiple public spaces make more sense, like Chapata Park, the performance pavilion along Barker Shore, um, the north side of the creek near the community gardens. Um, it, do we really desire to have a centrally located town square? Or do we want something more distributed? I think maybe what they want is um, to um, uh, develop more um, more public spaces for the community to um, congregate in and have arts, entertainment, civic events. But um, I don't understand the centrally located part of that.
I think originally that's sponsored, and this is for the committee to comment on when I bring this back. But they originally, before they changed these goals, was talking about First Street being shut down to be a pedestrian space. Uh, and so I, and kind of pulling back from that very specific goal, that's where this became generated from. And probably likely where the, the sentiment of centrally located town square, where that's coming out of.
Okay, thanks for that. That makes more sense. Yeah. I think the wording town, town square, you probably want to change then. And instead of town square, um, a centrally located uh, public space. I might, I might think of better wording for that later.
Okay, yeah. Send it on over. Other comments? All right, the next, I think I'm turning it all back over to Karen here for Parks, Recreation and Open Space.
Okay, uh, so I'm on this committee with Jill Reeves from Wild Bear and with May Gerald. And what we did here was we came up with the vision statement first, looking at some um, vision statements from other communities. And um, then what we did was we based the structure of this on the um, twenty thirteen uh, Parks, Recreation, Open Space and Trails Master Plan. And so it's divided into um, overall goal, parks goal, recreation goal, open space goal and trails goal.
This is Steve. I think it's a, I think it's a really good approach here, the way it's broken down. I don't really see anything that was missed.
Uh, yeah. Sorry, I was having a meeting. Yeah, okay.
We tried to be comprehensive um, in these committees and include everything that we're currently working on and planning to work on, and then additional longer-term goals. Uh, we tried to be sure to, to hit the major um, issues. So.
Yeah, ProFab also felt similar. They were very comprehensive. And I would say this is the subcommittee that um, received minimal feedback. And I think that's a positive, just because it is, there is so much here and have covered a lot of grounds. And, you know, great thank you too to Karen working so closely with ProFab and their team. I think that helps a lot.
You know, this is Steve again. Um, yeah, because I think it builds on previous documents, which, and that, that's a kind of a general comment I had, is some sections tend to have done their homework and gone uh, to previous documents, what's been done, what's, was planned and, you know, what, how can you expand that further? And then other sections is just like a little shopping list. So um, like, like Billy said, I, I think once it gets to the final editor, when things get, you know, tend to be smoothed out a little bit better. And then also I had a question about priorities. Is any of this in priority order or is that something that comes later?
Are you talking a total or just this park section?
A total, sorry.
So, so really where we go from here, this is actually our last subcommittee. So we're going to bring this before the board of trustees and actually ask them how they want to move forward. Because it was brought up that, you know, if we move forward with an action plan, which was originally the plan where we'd have really measurable components and performance measures that would help to prioritize, could that potentially become in conflict with a future comprehensive plan? So one asked before the board is, do you maybe want to stop where we are right now? And then help have this document to use as one of the guiding materials for the next comprehensive plan and then bringing in the consultants to complete that. The alternative is to keep moving forward with an action plan that would have those targeted um, measurements uh, and then also prioritize. So we just can't really comment. We'd like to see where the board feels it's best to invest our time. Um, there is acknowledgement that Envision is being put together by volunteers in the community and that perhaps we're at a space where we kind of turn this over to professional uh, personnel who could help to develop that twenty twenty-one or maybe twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan.
Uh, yes, that's absolutely right. And that's how we did it before. The Envision twenty twenty was kind of a guideline document that we used along with the, the DDA master plan, along with the trails and parks. And all of that sort of went as guideline documents into the comprehensive plan. So I'm kind of hoping, and I thought it was pretty successful. Roger can chime in on that as well, because we've done a number of these in the past. But I think it's a good model to follow. But as you said, we'll see what the court says.
I think where we've maybe differed a little bit is this year we went much more in depth. It wasn't just stopping at the vision statement. So we obviously offer a lot more in this document than historical vision documents may have done. And so again, the, all this work is not for nothing. But perhaps we modify it slightly so that this information is given to the comp plan. But we maybe highlight the vision statements like the twenty thirteen does to guide that process. But we'd like to get that feedback from the board of trustees uh, on where they want to go from here.
So I just want to um, clarify um, what the planned next steps are, which may, what was originally planned, um, which may change based on um, where the uh, board wants to go with the vision goals and objectives. But the next step was to develop an action plan, like the last chapter in the comprehensive plan, that would list out specific projects and initiatives and a timeframe and who, who's responsible for them. For example, for um, Parks, Recreation and Open Space, we've started putting together some projects and initiatives just because we wanted to keep the goals and objectives separate from the implementation. And so um, one of the projects for Parks, Recreation and Open Space is the um, Netherland Shoreline Trails and Stewardship Project um, for Resilient Communities Creating Connections. That's that. That's that grant that we just got to put, um, trails and, um, uh, trees and, um, benches and a child's play area along, uh, the western shore of Barker. So we'd then be getting into really specific actions that can be taken to realize the goals and objectives. So it's a whole nother couple months. Um, and with the small group of volunteers that we have that really, um, may not have the experience, knowledge to, to be doing an action plan, so.
Thanks, Karen. Yeah, so that's where we'd be looking for the Board of Trustees, um, because they're, you know, I think the intention, that, that was the intention as we started out and originally what was presented to the Board of Trustees, but as the process unfolded, there's just a recognition that, that perhaps if there's an opportunity to pivot and, and move then, you know, start to really look for the financial means to do the comprehensive plan, which, which needs to be updated every 10 years anyways, and so we're getting to that place where we should ideally be starting to work towards it.
Miranda, I had, I had a quick question for you, just, uh, overall on the process, because I, I failed to think to ask that until now. Can you tell me, it sounds like there was volunteers that were on multiple subcommittees. Can you give me an idea how many people were involved in this process total?
Um, yeah, we originally started out, I believe, with 16, but it dwindled from there, but I'm going to go to, I don't know if you can see my screen, Jim. So here's what we ended up with, and so you have members from different boards and commissions. You've got members from external agencies and then community members. I believe we ended up with 13. You know, we did have a few people like Clara, Amanda, and Sarah, who, who didn't feel that they could commit. Um, so, and then I might have put in here too, I did not, on our website, it also indicates like which person here is on which subcommittee.
Okay, I just, I, I also, I, I only point that out to, to say that that's a pretty small number of people that if this becomes a plan that specifically identifies tasks, I, I don't know if that's quite representative. I like the idea, my feedback, my additional feedback would be exactly what Steve said. I'd like to see this feed in as a starting point where feasible, uh, I think I already talked about in some areas where I didn't think it was feasible, uh, to try and change town code and thing to meet the goals here. But where feasible to support the compreh, the new comprehensive plan, uh, and have this be a really good document to say, hey, here's, here's a dedicated people of a, a group of involved people that had some specific requirements and, and feedback for ways we can meet these goals and have that, you know, be gone over again, like, like Steve said, by the professional, uh, people that can help put together the, the Vision 2023, uh, or whatever, the Comprehensive Plan 2023. Um, but I, I certainly appreciate all the good work and effort, and you see under Parks and, and, and Open Space and Recreation, they put in really great goals here, uh, but I'd hate to think that, you know, a lot of these things were made by what looks like to be about, like you said, a dozen people, uh, that would drive the direction for our town for the next 10 years.
Yeah, and I actually, you know, kind of credit to Karen, so Karen Blakemore had actually really kind of started to drive this conversation of pivoting, and, and I do think that it's very appropriate and, and perhaps not realized early on. I think we all were like, we're on a great path, but, but that's kind of the great thing about this, is I think a lot of valuable information came out of this process. But that, you know, again, Board of Trustees to decide, but that it likely is the time to now use this as just a guiding document, not the document by any means that builds the comprehensive plan, because Karen has identified too that there's so many other categories in the comprehensive plan that aren't reflective here, but this could be just one of the documents that helps those professionals build what is statutorily required. And so I think there, there is a consensus or a feeling kind of amongst town staff and this committee for Envision that they've done some really amazing work, and that work is like going to be the catalyst for the next step.
I concur.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and again, last time, I think we built the, um, the action plan came out of the comprehensive plan. So, you know, because it, it brought together, as I said, a bunch of different guiding documents together, um, rather than just use one. So anyway, good, good work. This is really, I think.
I would say one thing, that this, this is a relatively small group, even the original, you know, with the three that aren't doing anymore, um, but basically everyone who applied got appointed. And so part of it was, this is, you know, this is people who just showed the interest in, you know, it was kind of limited with the way they laid, you know, it was laid out, and we want people, as many people from boards and these many people from whatever, external organizations or community members, and that may or may not have scared people away, but, um, you know, basically everyone who, who applied, I think, got appointed, and, um, you know, if we were to open it up to more people, I think one thing that would, you know, if we just go to like professionals and they take it from there, then that may be the way to go. But if they were, we were opening it up to like more people, I think one thing that wasn't made clear enough, you know, and I just don't know how, how effectively to make it clear enough, is that this wasn't for like town residents only. This was really targeted for people in and around the area who use Netherlands as kind of a hub. Um, you know, and that, if had that been made clear, maybe a few more people would have shown interest, I don't know.
If I can just weigh in, this is Karen, um, just like tonight where you're having such a rich conversation. Miranda and I have had the honor and pleasure of attending all of these meetings, and we have usually five or six a week. And there are, there are some amazing conversations that are taking place, and Billy, to your point, we're getting people who don't live in town. They may, um, provide a service that our town members take advantage of. They may be, um, producing programming that our, our town takes advantage of, or they're living in the library district or the EcoPass district or what have you. And I know it, it's, it's still not, you know, thousands of people or whatever participating in these conversations. But I would say, and, you know, Miranda, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say at least two or three times a week, we are having these just really robust and rich conversations. And what was originally suggested by the subcommittee ends up getting a lot of input and kind of changing and restructuring and sort of pivoting. So, and it's happening with certain subgroups more than others. That, that's definitely true. Um, so it's not, it's not balanced, but, um, you know, I, I, I have to applaud Miranda, because she has completely made it so possible for people to engage in this process in so many different platforms. And, you know, we're, we're really, we've connected with the Peak to Peak H and H, HHS Alliance, and all these other organizations that represent multiple organizations, and a lot of those folks, they don't live in town. They may live in Ward or Jamestown or even Allen's Park or Gilpin County, um, participating in these conversations. I'm just not sure how, how we could have, you know, thrown the net even wider during a pandemic and gotten the kind of product we have. And I just, I just want to, I can't say enough about, um, Miranda's just commitment to this process and making sure, you know, we, we were productive.
No, that's great to hear. And definitely, Miranda, you've been amazing. And I think what Jim pointed out, kind of that snapshot, which is just what he's seeing, looking at this list of just these few people, or, you know, that he asked the question basically. But that's good to hear, like that this month has been, you know, productive with other people coming in and giving their two cents.
Thank you, Karen. To that point, oh, sorry, Karen, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, that was great feedback, Karen, um, to hear that you're feeling good about the conversations um, that you've had with the community. I, I was going to mention when we do do the comprehensive plan, it seems like we still need like a steering committee of community members to be working with the professional service. So I, that's how it was done in the past, so I don't know.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's very typical, Karen, that you would have some consultants who are hired to work with the town. And usually there's a staff person who is sort of the liaison, um, and then usually elected officials and, um, you know, department heads and folks like that who, who kind of help the experts, uh, craft the final product.
Okay, great.
That's very, very typical.
Okay.
And I think to Billy's point, you know, again, it's, the Envision Committee would by any means be the only ones, but we have obviously established a group here who, you know, again, the shout out also goes to them. These group members put in, you know, originally I think I said two to four hours a week. It was probably more like five to seven. They put in a substantial amount of time over the last three months, um, and would be great members, whether they're on the steering committee or just giving feedback. Um, so the amount of work put into this can help definitely to guide that. So I guess I just kind of want to end on the final point of, you know, if you, you walk away from tonight feeling like there's more you want to give feedback wise, while we don't have any more charrette or outreach sessions aside from community engagement tomorrow, you do have the ability to jump on our website. There's a feedback form there. You can stop by Town Hall. You can comment on our YouTube video. You can comment on Facebook. We have a Gather Town, which is like an avatar type program. Lots of different ways, uh, while we'll still gather feedback, you know, as, as we continue forward, we really want to make sure that we're trying to get everything we can by end of day Friday, so that the, the subcommittees know what recommendations are working off of. It will be hard to integrate if we get it too late into next week. But do encourage you, if things come up, to just look at the other ways in which you can provide that feedback.
Okay, thank you very much, Marissa.
Thank you all. I really appreciate all the feedback you provided. Thank you so much.
Good. Yeah, and as she said, if you think of anything else, send it in, uh, this week. Okay. So, uh, moving on to the, um, last item will be the Town Staff Report. Karen, I guess you'll present this.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I just want to give you all the out since it's after 11:00. If you wanted to, you could just read it. I also don't mind, um, you know, going through it.
Well, if you want to, maybe if you just want to, um, you know, highlight some of the, um, high points, if you will, um, just to, but yes, everybody can read the details.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, uh, this month, we recognized Rick Hendrickson, who just does an amazing job of partnering with the town. We call him our ad hoc team member, and we recognized him, and I just wanted to point out what, um, Marshall Johns said about him, which is Rick is a highly valuable asset to the community. Rarely do you get a medic, firefighter, and cop all in one person. And normally Rick is at these, uh, but he's actually on vacation right now, so, um, uh, but we wanted to recognize him. We are doing a Water Rights 101 training with the board. Uh, my report says it's May 18th, but that's actually going to move. It's probably going to be the first meet, meeting in June. Uh, the town staff, we are partnering with, um, uh, modern communities, both counties and some towns. Clear Creek County, Grand County, Gilpin County, Estes Park, and Lyons, and we are working on an application for a request for technical funding to build a roadmap to recovery uh, from the pandemic, all working together collectively, because we have so many common interests and needs, um, such as tourism. Uh, and so we are applying, uh, the due date's May 13th for this funding through DOLA, where we would basically get an, a consultant who would work with all of us to create kind of an economic recovery roadmap. Uh, the, the COVID update, this is already outdated. Um, this week, the numbers aren't looking as good as they were, um, last week. We are actually seeing increases in some of our numbers, unfortunately, but the good news is, um, vaccinations are, uh, the numbers for vaccinations are really good. We, um, have over 90% of our folks over 70 have been vaccinated. Uh, over, um, 88%, I think, of people in the 60 to 69 have been vaccinated. 72% of the people 50 to 59 years old, 65% for the 40 to 49 year olds, which is really good. 64% for 30 to 39 year olds, and then we see a drop 2020, 20 to 29 is at a 40% level. But that's still really good. Boulder County is doing really excellently in, um, in vaccinations. But as I said, you know, our numbers are starting to go up, which was not unexpected because of the, uh, reduction in the restrictions, which happened about two weeks ago. And so we were expecting that we were going to see an increase. Um, there's some other things that you could read in the report. I did want you guys to know that, um, unbelievably so, uh, we applied for funding for these community projects that, um, Congressman Nagus was going to select 10 out of the entire district to bring to the Appropriations Committee in Washington DC. And it looks like the application we put in for the Big Springs Egress is making the shortlist. So we just got that news today, which is incredible, because I have been trying to find funding to construct, um, an egress, and there just hasn't been, FEMA doesn't fund it. It doesn't really count for emergency preparation. Couldn't get it through transportation funds because it's not an actual road. Um, and so this is a great opportunity, um, with, um, some of the funding coming down the pipeline through the federal government for us to apply, and we heard from, um, Nagus's team that we are one of 10, um, projects that he selected that will be presented to the Appropriations Committee. So that's just amazing news, and I knew, I know you guys, a lot of you have been involved in the process to, to even address the need in the Big Springs neighborhood for an egress, so I wanted to share that with you. I think everything else you can probably just read, um, in the report, and of course, if you have some questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The only thing I'd like to just quickly, um, just point out, and I don't know if Chris has it in here, is a revitalizing Main Streets grant that he's looking for, for, to really work on First Street and do some infrastructure. We'll send, um, some more details out in an email, but he's looking for letters of support. So what I'll do is I'll share kind of the blurb about it, and then Chris would be the most appropriate person to connect with. Um, but he is looking to get some letters, uh, expressing interest in the infrastructure updates he's proposing for First Street.
Hi Karen, this is Jim Reese. I just wanted to make a quick comment here. I know it's already late, so I'll be brief. I wanted to first say thank you for nominating, uh, Miranda, and I wanted to give some kudos and let everybody else have a chance to give some kudos to Miranda. As our community champion, as our town employee, I know we have a lot of good employees that probably could have been put in for that award, but, uh, as evidenced by the Envision 2030 process, you do a lot of extra late night stuff, uh, Miranda. And I, I just want to thank you for, for all that hard work, and that is a well-deserved honor, uh, as our community champion from, uh, the town employee. And then secondly, I just want to thank Karen. Uh, thank you for being our town administrator for this last four years. Since last, uh, Planning Commission meeting, uh, you've announced that you're going to be moving on. And I personally know how hard of a job it is and how much work goes into being the town administrator. Uh, you've really moved our town forward, and I, all these great things that we're doing and continuing, uh, the momentum for our town really falls. You get the credit for that, Karen. Uh, so thank you so much for all your hard work during your, your four plus years here, uh, in the county.
You know, Jim, that is so kind. Thank you so much. I have to say, though, that, um, it is definitely a team effort. You know, it's the staff, it's all the, um, boards and commissions, it's all the volunteer organizations. It, there's just so many amazing people in Netherlands, and it's just an honor and a pleasure to, to work here. And even though I'm also, you know, looking forward to taking a break and, um, spending some more time with my family and kind of reimagining how I show up in service, um, it, it was a hard, it was a very hard decision to make, especially with the staff. I really appreciate every single staff person has just been, um, amazing to work with. And, um, and the boards and commissions, I mean, the Planning Commission, definitely stellar, all of you. You're all volunteers and look. Commission, definitely stellar. All of you, you're all volunteers. And look at, look at you guys. It's after 11:00. You're still hanging in there with us. And I just appreciate all of you.
Well, thank you. And that high note, I think we'll go through.
Time to go to bed.
Oh, one, one quick reminder. If you haven't responded to Karen's recycling survey, please do so. I, I did that today, actually. So go ahead and do that. And let's see. So anything else? Anyone have anything?
Can we just say one other thing? Just one other thing too, is just remember that we are doing the Town Cleanup Day on the first Saturday in June, just like we've done in the past, where we are looking for volunteers to help. And whether or not you volunteer, I know several of you I see every year, and we're hoping to see you again this year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion. Do we have a second? Okay. All, well, I guess Cynthia says all in favor.
All in favor? Awesome. Meeting is adjourned.
Good, good thing we sorted the agenda, isn't it?
11:11 PM.
All right, good night.
Oh, that's kind of special.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Miranda.
Yep, bye.
Bye.